Everyone to take a seat, please. Quiet, please. Thank you. All right. Good evening, this is the room here.
Test.
Test that our mics, please. You'll all turn on your mics.
Vice Chair Ross. Can you hear me? Trustee Rodriguez.
Trustee Jack's present.
Trustee Moze is present.
Uh, trustee Silver, I am present. Um, I will begin the meeting by reminding everyone there are form restrictions and an orderly conduct conduct of business is expected. Examples of disruptive conduct include without limitation yelling, stamping of feet, whistles, applause, heckling, name calling, use of profanity, threatening use of physical force, or any acts, other acts intended to impede the meeting or infringe on the rights of the library board of trustees, staff, or meeting participants. With that, we will move to the agenda. And the first item on our agenda is salute to the flag. And I will start that off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
Uh, we've done the roll call. And at this point, I will uh take the point of privilege of moving around our agenda. And I have an announcement to make, which is that Director Scott has voluntarily resigned his position as library director effective immediately. And so our agenda will look a little different this evening. Okay, moving on, um. May we have the Spanish Springs Library update, please? May I ask for silence in the audience, please? If you wish to have discussion, exit the room, please. Thank you.
Welcome. Jane McMillan, Spanish Springs Library Manager for the record.
Hold on, Jane.
And probably nothing I say will top what you just said, but I'm gonna give it a try. All right.
May I ask for quiet in the room, please? Out of respect for the speaker and everyone else trying to hear. If you would like to talk with each other, step out of the room, please. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. So we start off with a picture of the Spanish Springs Library on a day that it was raining and we managed to catch a rainbow over it, so I had to share that because it was lovely. There it is. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. I like to always start with Spanish Springs Library in the news and on social media. This year, we had a social media influencer who came and did a library shoot at our library. Um, about I didn't do that. That wasn't me. About how she loved libraries, so there's a picture of that photo shoot and her. Thank you. We also had journalism students from the University of Nevada stage a hug a library event and they chose the Spanish Springs Library to do that at on Valentine's Day. So those are some pictures from that. Next slide, please. For the first time, Spanish Springs Library got to be a fire evacuation site. That happened in June of last year. We have some pictures there of when this happened. Libraries are in the position of doing that in various locations now. We also
Going to ask for a two-minute recess. For those of you who wish to converse about any prior announcements made, please step out of the room. We want to give our full attention to the Spanish Springs Library Manager. And people are still whispering and talking with each other, so two-minute recess effective immediately. Thank you. You're okay? You just put some dollars in.
We're still being budgeted? I'm still receiving the budget? Okay, nothing?
That's me again. All right, our recess our recess is over. Apparently is my mic. Um, our recess is over. Please, we allow the Spanish Springs Library Manager to continue her presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the first time ever, we got to be a fire evacuation site for the Palomino Valley Fire, which was last June, the 21st. Um, and even though nobody ended up showing up to our location, it was still something that we were proud and pleased to be able to do for that community. Northwest Library also got to be a fire evacuation center this this past year, as did South Valleys um more successfully than we did because they had people who showed up. So the BCC, the Board of County Commissioners, recognized our efforts in helping with that. And the pictures on the bottom part of that are uh staff going to the BCC meeting to accept uh thank you from them. Next slide, please. We also are a voting location for our community. For many years, I've fought to have our uh library also be an election day voting location. And finally, in 2020, we got to do that. So these are some pictures from the various elections that we got to host. Got to host at our library this year. Can everybody hear me without this? I know, for home. Okay, I'll put it a little further away, maybe that'll stop it. Let me, let me continue with this at a distance. If you guys can hear me, okay? Okay. Cause I can be loud. All right. So we had various uh elections at the Spanish Springs Library this year. We had a special election for Palomino Valley. We had the Washoe County Primary early voting. We had regular early voting for the general election and we had the Washoe County Election Day voting. And that bottom picture in the right, they started early, so we started early and let them inside out of the cold, so they got a chance to stay warm. Moving on, we were um number two on the early voting for the general election um as far as sites with the most people. So we had 7,756 people at Spanish Springs this year. Usually we rank up number one, so that was a little different for us. I wanted to also show you some pictures of our amazing library staff. The picture in the upper left, we do staff training twice a year. And in May of last year, we got to host the staff training, so that's a picture of all the library staff from all of the branches. And then my staff in particular over here dressed up for Halloween at outreaches, accepting an award from the Department of Training and Rehabilitation for our volunteer slash internship program that we piloted with them this year. And then, of course, we have many, many super users at our library, as we do at several locations. And all of those books on that counter that Helen is looking so pleased to check in, we're dropped off. We're dropped off by one person. Next slide, please. One day, a man walked into the library and he said, I'd like to give you a moose. And that is not a thing that has normally been said to me or ever been said to me in a library environment or anywhere else. I said, what do you mean? Cause I was kind of intrigued. I walked out to his truck with him and indeed he had a moose. This moose was donated to us by Greater Nevada Credit Union, where he used to be a mascot, where he's draped in human clothing. And the first thing we did was undress him from the human clothing so he could return to his natural state as a moose. And then my staff promptly started dressing him up for holidays. So you see him here. He's a new feature at our library. The kids love him for toddler time and story time. They come in and they visit with the moose, give the moose a hug before story times and toddler times. Next slide, please. And speaking of story times, we do them every Monday morning. We have three main staff who do our story times, Joy, Helen, and Sasha. And these are just pictures of them doing story time. Next slide, please. We also have a baby social. Our employee Helen started that for the system. We now have it at two libraries. We do it at Spanish Springs on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. It's an opportunity for people with babies to get together. And the babies can socialize, the parents can socialize, early literacy is in the cards there. They play some games, they have some activities, and books are included as well. Next slide, please. We do two toddler times um a week. We have a Thursday toddler time with Ben and Erin. Ben and Erin on the left there preparing for toddler time. They do a show that relies a lot on um their musical abilities. They are two very different people from one another. One is very focused, the other seems a little scattered, but they're both creative geniuses. One plays the guitar and the other sings with a blues voice. If you've never had a chance to see a toddler time on a Thursday, you should come do that. Next slide, please. And then our team for Friday toddler times, Ann and Chris, a little bit different of what they do, but equally popular and very different audiences appear for both of those toddler times. Toddler times are by registration only. Ours are among the most popular in the system. Next slide, please. We also have a Lego Robotics Program. Ben, our evil genius from toddler time, runs that program. We've managed to duplicate Lego Robotics as a specialty program at a couple of other branches, but ours runs every week, whereas it's only been a one-off at other locations. Very, very popular with the little guys. In fact, it's so popular that we do spring and winter camps for the little, little sisters and brothers. And that's those bottom two pictures there are the little guys getting a chance to learn how to program a robot, build a robot, and play with a robot. Next slide, please. We have a Thursday craft studio that's open to people of all ages and abilities. Every Thursday, all our staff participate in that and you get to do some fun, crazy stuff at the library. Next slide, please. And this is Erin, one of our toddler time evil geniuses, who also runs our very popular Dungeons and Dragons programs for the teens. Teens, if any of you know teens, you will know that they are a difficult audience. They're difficult at home, they're difficult in many different areas. Um, it's hard traditionally to get the teens to come back to the library. We've managed to do it and we've hooked them with this program. It's been running for um just over three years and we've had so far 200 unique users of teens that have come in for this program. It's every Friday at Spanish Springs. Next slide, please. So this year, um, we managed to, in fall of 2023, our library director Jeff Scott had notified us that we had some grant money that we could spend, which turns out to be a very good thing since the tax initiative did not pass. Usually libraries are renovated based on the tax initiative money that goes into our um our budget and we were scheduled for renovation. Spanish Springs Library is 20 years old this year. And people come in and they say, I don't believe it, it looks so great. Well, there's a lot of work that goes into making that happen and a lot of people don't realize that. So I do like to share that with you. Um, I took a look back at what we've been doing the last couple of years. The last couple of years, the last three years in particular, we've put in over 400 work orders with Washoe County facilities staff for things that need to be repaired. So this is general maintenance and some of it is stuff that's not quite general. We've had a lot of carpeting and flooring issues. We've had a lot of um dings in the paint. We've had plumbing issues. We have a major structural issue in the building right now. We have foundation cracks across the facility. We are waiting a visit of a structural engineer to talk to us about what next steps look like for that. We don't have the money to do anything with it right now. So that is where we are. So when Jeff got us this extra money to be able to do something, we chose to focus on remodeling a couple of areas of the library. You'd be surprised, $75,000 doesn't go as far as you think it might go. But teens, as I mentioned, are hard to bring back into the library and their space has been very dated for 20 years. So if you look in that upper left corner picture, you'll see some bench-style seedings with very low tables in front of them. It's very hard for teens to come in and socialize with one another, to play games, to do their homework when they have to bend in half to reach what's on the table and work on it or see it. So we got rid of all the furniture, we brought in brand-new furniture, we had the room painted. We turned that very cool metal backdrop there into an art gallery. We had the um half carpet, half-painted floor that has been a lot of maintenance for us. They have to, the floor has to be half-painted every year. We have to have carpet squares replaced when they get bad. Um, we had that removed and we had it polished down to the original concrete. And then we also had our um electrical panels in the floor looked at and that's what you're seeing there. The other feature that we added is a blackboard chalk art wall, which you can see in that upper picture in the very middle. And the painter down there is bringing that down to a flat surface so it can work as a chalkboard once you paint it with the chalkboard paint. Next slide, please. Our staff also, of course, got in on the remodel. They always like to be involved. Everybody in the building participated in some fashion. We took our cricket machine and we made some vinyl um wording for the art gallery. We made it for teens only, which is now what the space is called. We had them put up uh color-changing light strips throughout. We made the gallery function that metal backdrop becomes a magnetic surface to hang kids' work on. And we added two TVs. The little one that you're looking at in the middle, bottom center um is a, this is something I didn't know teens needed, but now I do. Um, it is a world travel video TV that also has chill music for them to Yeah, I, I had to be schooled in that by my staff. Chill music. It's been a while since I've been a teen for the kids to actually socialize to and do their homework. Next slide, please. And so teens only was closed for a couple of months. We didn't have furniture, we're having all this work done in there. And then the day the furniture was delivered was also the day that we were going to reopen it. One of the things that I did order for that space is the teens-only neon sign that you can see there in that bottom picture. And for those of you who are alive before 1992, do you remember the Mervyn's ad? Open, open, open. Every time I see that picture, that's what I think of. I put, the day we put that sign up, those three girls came into the library, they went zooming in on that sign, they stared through there and all I could think was open, open, open. And so we did. Next slide, please. Here's a picture of our grand opening, which happened in July of last year. We had our D and D program in the room, so the kids are playing D and D, they're playing board games, they're on the computers, they're doing um chalk art on the walls. Those same three girls that were out there got to kick off the chalk art wall. They were super excited about that. And of course, they're eating pizza and they brought some of their families with them. That other that other TV over there on the bottom-left picture is a larger TV. We turned that into a gaming emulation station so the kids could play arcade-style games. I'm told Centipede is on there. And if anybody wants to challenge me, I will take you down. Next slide, please. So these are pictures of our teens-only gallery. We got that filled right away. The kids from our D and D program put up the first works that went up there. You're also looking at Desert Skies Middle School work and families came to take pictures of their kids' work. That's the lower left-hand corner there and a little bit of art from some other groups as well. Next slide, please. So the other half of the money that I got, I thought the other space that really needed an update was our public meeting room. And our public meeting room is one of the places where we had a lot of carpeting issues. We have, everybody can use it, it's free to the public. You can book the meeting room space as long as you're not doing a social event and as long as you're not doing something like running a business. Um, Bruce booked our public meeting room. He did his constitution program there. So anybody can do that as long as you're not charging anything and it's free and open to the public. If you're trying to do a bridal shower or a celebration of life, that's not the space. But, so, we have a lot, Starbucks does training in our public meeting room. And so we've had coffee spilled there a lot, we've had carpet replaced there a lot. And they're in carpet squares, so that part's a little bit easier. But a couple of other branches changed to a laminate-style flooring. I wanted a laminate-style flooring, so that's where we threw some money. We had the old carpeting removed and we had laminate flooring put in. The bad news there is that the laminate flooring has been recalled, which I found out in January. So we're gonna have it replaced again. That will be in June. So when you see that the meeting room is closed for a week, that's why it's closed for a week. Um, they initially thought it was a problem with the product. It turns out it's a problem with the state. We are simply too arid to keep that flooring together, so the ends are coming apart. So it smells nice in there. I was super excited that you guys were gonna be at my library so I could show you my meeting room, show you the new paint we put in, show you the new flooring we put in, show you the new furniture. So you'll just have to be jealous. I would love to see you come out to the library. I would be happy to host you on a tour. So far, trustee Rodriguez has taken us up on that offer. She's gone to every branch. Happy to do that. Please come see us. We would love to meet with you and show you our properties. Okay, next slide, please. And this is the final picture when we had the room painted up to match the rest of the stuff in there. And then, of course, I invited the fire marshal to come give us some new numbers of occupancy load for the room. Turns out now they do three sets of numbers, one with furniture and tables and people and one with just people and one with a selection of both. So we have three different occupancy loads for the rooms now, but that's all good and in good shape and good to go. Um, library director Jeff Scott also got us a um a grant for new technology, which was another thing I was hoping to trot out for you tonight. Now people can hear without this and without the resulting problems with the microphone. They can see better what's happening at home and in the room. Um, we tested it out earlier this month with the Citizens Advisory Board, so don't get to do that for you, but maybe we'll see you again at some point. Next slide, please. And absolutely unbeknownst to me, um, all those 400-plus work orders that we put in last year that had to do with carpeting and a bunch of other things, our operations superintendent for the county said, you know what? We've repaired that carpet so much, let's replace it. Not all of it, but our circle of points Paiute Basket Pattern Carpet, which is this pattern you're seeing in the center of the library, we have a lot of Native American elements built into our building. That's one of them. They had the money to replace that this year. So that part is new and of course, second, it was down, somebody spilled coffee on it because that's how it goes, but it's clean today. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to give you a look at some of the library displays that we have. We do displays for all people everywhere, all of our patrons. So there's a little bit of everything up there for everybody. Next slide, please. Another picture of displays and people enjoying displays. We also have people in the community who bring their collections. There's one with a skateboard there, skate, really classic skateboard collection. There's one with Pez dispensers and you can just kind of see the magic and the kids and the teens enjoying that. Next slide, please. And we also, of course, host an annual staff Halloween pumpkin decorating contest, not carving, because they've got to last for a couple of weeks out in the public area and we don't want them going moldy. So decorating, I just wanted to show you that because I'm proud of my staff. Next slide, please. We do a tremendous amount of outreaches and tours in conjunction with other libraries and the library system altogether and then also on our own. Here we are at Juneteenth in the upper right-hand corner. We hosted a series of crafts and story times. I did outreaches to Sutcliffe at the Pyramid Lake Reservation over the summer last year. Those are those three pictures there and then people come to us. So you see a picture of a tour there in the center of the library. We have a mapping feature by our Sarah Winnamucca statue, so people can see what it looks like on a map from a bird's eye view from our library all the way out to Pyramid Lake. And then, of course, we go to schools as well. Next slide, please. More pictures of outreaches and tours. We participate in the Arboretum Story Times and Craft every year. Those are those upper two left pictures there. We help North Valleys out with their Santa fly-in at the Sted Airport. Our staff also does outreaches to the Native American community. There's Ann in the middle in the bottom and she is doing a story time for the Head Start Kids at the Hungry Valley Reservation. And then, of course, Ben's leading a tour here that is in the library. Next slide, please. Lindsay went up to Incline to help with the sheriff's outreach up there. We did the Be a Neighbor Day with Channel 5 at Idowell Park. We took the bookmobile with us, so there's a picture from that. And then we have some STEAM events that we went to. We have the Hometown Christmas Parade in Sparks and the Pride Festival at downtown Reno last summer. Next slide, please. We have a sensory sound garden in our library. So far, I think we're the only one, although I did hear that Incline was looking at getting some sensory music um elements out at their branch, too. I don't know if they actually did that. We have um sit-on-style drums, which you'll see in the lower bottom-right corner. We have a stand-up free chimes that people can play. And then we have a color-coded xylophone. And we have music sheets that one of my staff made so people can go out and play a song, even if they can't read music. They can follow their colors and they know their colors, they can play something. And as you can see, that's enjoyed by people across all walks of life. The gentleman in the upper left has been one of our longtime patrons and I caught him out there playing it by himself. I have caught our landscape crew playing them. So I'm just saying, everybody plays them. Next slide, please. We host events for all ages. In the upper left, Chris leads our coding program where we teach beginning coding basics, computer coding, to people of all ages, although it's mostly kids who show up. We have the master gardeners the last Sunday of the month. They come, they also do a help desk after their program. We did a program, you can't really see the numbers on that upper-right one, but that was an Escape the Library program and we wrote the number of minutes and seconds that it took that family to escape the library. People love escape rooms, so that was our version. And probably my all-time favorite picture is that one in the lower left. Our events manager Lindsay went ahead and we couldn't get a Santa for toddler time a year or two ago and she said, well, why don't we invite the Paws to read dogs and we'll do Santa Paws? It's been hugely popular. The dogs dress up in um Christmas gear and their handlers do too. And as you can see, everybody wants to touch and pet the dogs and get pictures with them. And then that lower-right picture is teens playing on the gaming emulation station in the teens-only area. We sometimes have contests there, but they can also come in and ask for the equipment and enjoy that as well. Next slide, please. More events for all ages. We host two book groups. We have a mystery book club, we have a Tuesday book club. That's what you're seeing in the upper left-hand corner. We have pioneer programs. We generally do those in our atrium because if you've been in our building, you know the sound is fantastic there. We do STEAM events, that's science, technology, engineering, art, and math. What you're seeing in the lower left-hand corner is one that's about heart health, which is why everybody's leaping about frantically so they can check their pulse afterwards. And then in the lower right, sometimes programs get brought to us and those are the journalism students from UNR who were doing the Hug Your Library event, so there's some pictures of that. Next slide, please. How do people use the library? Well, they use it in all sorts of ways. They come, they interview for jobs, they come, they use the public meeting rooms, they come to programs, they read, obviously, they do community puzzles, they visit with their friends. That lower picture on the right on the bottom is going to be a group that comes every week. They do crochet, some people do quilting. And if you notice there, there's men, there's women, there's people of all ages who come and sit in a circle in front of our fireplace once a week and do this in their library. Next slide, please. This is some other pictures of people using the library, school groups coming in, people working on puzzles, people using our um Rocket wishing well down there and working on homework. Next slide, please. And of course, we live in a very tremendous community. Spanish Springs has a lot of really great people. They like to show their appreciation to the library, so I brag back on them. They feed us. You can see those amazing cupcakes. They write books, they write notes, they bring us cookies, they bring us more cupcakes, sandwiches, painted rocks, letters, um, donuts. Next slide, please. You think I'm kidding, but here's some more. We have a whole field of minion cupcakes. We have bagels, we have more things, we have chocolate bars, we have more cupcakes, we have flowers, we have that little girl in the bottom, loved Ann's toddler time, made her a bracelet and brought her a card. We have Thin Mints from the Girl Scouts. It goes on. Next slide, please. And just because I want to make sure you believe how great our community is and how much people appreciate the library out there, here's more. So if you're wondering why it is that some of us are well-padded, this is why. That's all I'm gonna say. Okay. So last summer, we do summer reading program every year. One of our staff, Helen, decided that for the kickoff for summer reading program, she would put out some hearts and she would say to people, go ahead and tell us why you love the library. And so they did. They came forth and they told us and they told us and they told us. And we made them into decorations, as you can see in that lower-right-hand picture. And this is my final slide coming up, so next slide. 520 hearts in a one-month period from June to July. We've turned them into decorations. Somebody asked to borrow them to take them to the BCC to talk about supporting the library. So they've been around, we have them up now, you can come read them. Um, people love their libraries. And then the last thing I would like to say to you is that, I mentioned to you, we are celebrating 20 years. Um, and so, of course, we are doing, I'm just gonna hand this to you, you can pass it across. We are doing a birthday We are doing a birthday celebration for Spanish Springs Library. Everybody is invited. You are invited, but don't show up all together because we don't want to violate open meeting law by having a quorum. Our birthday celebration will feature a giant birthday card that my staff is making that people can sign. Lots and lots of birthday cake because you fed us, so we're feeding you back. We're going to have the Eagle Wings pageant dancers come. They're going to be performing for us. They're also going to teach the public some native dances. And we have Sarah Winamucca's family coming. They have, one of the things that we have in our libraries is Sarah Winamucca statue. It's a half-size maquette. We have the original full-size one in the National Sculpture Gallery in Washington DC. We have the small version. And the plaque that's been on her statue for 20 years talks about the artist who made it and talks about the statue, but it does not talk about Sarah Winamucca nor why she was important. One of my staff had to point this out to me. So we remedied that. I asked Sarah Winamucca's descendants if they could write something that talked about her life. They did. Jeff approved me spending the funds to make it into a plaque. We're going to dedicate that plaque at our 20th birthday. And Sarah Winamucca's family is coming. They're bringing some Sarah Winamucca items from her life to share in the display cases, so you can enjoy that as well. We will also have an Indian taco vendor. If you've never had an Indian taco, I would invite you to come and try one. Come bring some money, buy your lunch from her. We would like to support her. That is all I have. Do you have any questions? Oh, date and time. Wow, that's kind of important. So that would be Sunday, May 18th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM is the bulk of the celebration. The Indian tacos will be there starting at about 11:30 or 12:00. So if you're coming for lunch, that'd be when to start. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
Okay, I just wanted to ask, are you are you all right if we end up there showing up and we don't do library business? I don't want to have to vitally. I would just like our attorney to weigh in.
Can anyone hear me? Okay, now I can hear. Yes, that is not a violation of the open meeting law. It's not a meeting per se. We do try to have the trustees and other board members of other boards not all attend events all at once. However, it's not a violation of the open meeting law. I would encourage you, if you are all there together or a quorum at least, not to gather together to give the appearance that you might be discussing library matters. But it's not an open meeting law violation to appear.
Glad to hear that. I hope we're all there. We will step 10 feet apart and mingle with the crowd, but I just want to thank you for this tremendous presentation. Do my colleagues have questions or comments?
Madam Chair, Herb Kaplan for the record again, just a housekeeping matter. I assume based on the circumstances that you are pulling items 2A, which is the library director update, as well as 7B, which is the performance evaluation.
I am. Thank you for saying that. Yes, please.
Trustee Moser for the record, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all you do. I noted a few things. I know escape rooms are incredibly expensive and so that is really happy to see that that's available for the public. And then also just thank you for the personal invite. I think that's the first one we've ever had. So I really do appreciate that and I will certainly be there. I know her story is incredibly distraught and it's kind of overwhelming when you actually learn about why its name, how it got its name. So I really do appreciate that. And thank you just for all you do and sorry for all the struggles with all your structural issues, but hopefully we can figure out a plan to help you through that.
Any other comments? If not, seeing none, I am skipping 2C. Unless there is a team update, marketing and communications. Thank you, please.
I wasn't sure what the mic issue is. Can we hold it up like this? Is that okay? Works? Okay, great. Good afternoon for the record. Jamie Hemmway, Public Information and Development Officer, and I'm here along with.
Brad Bynum, I'm the Marketing and Communication Assistant. Hi.
And Brad is going to take the lead on this report. I will be here to offer moral support and pepper in some, anything that he might need help with, but he's got it.
Thank you for that vote of confidence, Jamie. So hi, we're the Marketing and Communications Team. We're not the, we're the department, but we're not the only people on the team because we work with people from every branch. All of our library branches do a lot of really amazing programs. We have a lot of great events. We have a lot of great art galleries. We have a lot of great educational classes. We have a lot of great storytimes, all kinds of great events, but there's no point in doing those events or that programming if nobody shows up. So the marketing department's job is to make sure that people do come out to these events. And we try to do that in a lot of ways and we work directly with people at the branches and they make collateral for the events. That collateral includes posters, signage, as well as social media widgets and widgets that we put on our website to help promote our events. And then we do some partnering with different organizations around town as well to help promote our events and so we work with people at every branch. Now's a good time to give some shout outs to the, to the Markcom reps at all of our library branches. So here it's Marie at Incline Village. It's Amanda and Russell at North Valleys. It's Ashley and Tati. At Northwest, it's Jessica and Morgan. At South Valleys, no, it's Sierra View. It's Lori and Samantha. At South Valleys, it's Juliana and Jen. At Spanish Springs, it's Aurora and Jana. And at Sparks, it's Emily and Jackman. And then Becca is our technical services rep. So we work directly with all these people to go over the collateral that they make to promote their events and help get the word out for those events. Part of how we do that is we have a weekly meeting for collateral review. And so the collateral review team takes a look at all the collateral that's created in the system and gives back notes and edits. My background is in journalism, so I do a lot of the copy editing for a lot of the content that we put and also the things that we put up on social media and, and the signs and widgets and make sure that everything adheres to our journalism standards and AP style standards. Yeah, you can keep going. There's the Markcom is a team effort. Yeah, the queue there. So Markcom is a team effort. So our mission is to provide clear, concise and professional marketing and cohesive branding for the library system and to improve library recognition, create trust, build financial value, inspire both internal and external customers. Like I say, it's our job to get people in the building and make sure that they have a good time. So we have representatives at each branch and we work with them and communicate with them regularly. And you know, as part of the communication, part of our job, we also try to, you know, keep regular tabs and talk to everyone. Our current projects include the Explorer Magazine. Well, I was, I was going to say about collateral review before I get to that. So we review all the collateral that comes through the system and we have a team that meets weekly that includes rotating representatives from the Markcom people at each branch. And then the two of us and then the two people from the Internet Services Team and Jackman from Sparks Branch. And yeah. Collateral signs, posters, social media widgets and what widgets for the website. So all the signage and everything that we make. Yeah, that's collateral. Marketing jargon. And so collateral, in collateral review, we take a look at everything and we decide, you know, this needs to be bigger, this font, we, we, we run things through contrast check to make sure that all this, it's visible and it adheres to ADA standards as far as accessibility. And then we make sure that everything is legible and that there's no typos, no misspelled words, nothing like that, and that all the copy adheres to Associated Press standards and our internal standards for review. And so that's a weekly process that we do and for all the signs to get posted out. And then it's our job to post these things on social media or to help distribute them. And then the other big project, ongoing project we have is the Explorer Magazine, which I think you'll have seen at this point, but it's yeah, this is something we really love putting together. It's a lot of fun and it's a way to put all the events that we have in one handy place. Prior to making the Explorer Magazine, each branch would promote differently. In this way, everything is in one place. We can group by storytimes on one page. We can have art gallery events on one page. And it's also a chance to highlight the branches and some of the individual programming that goes on at the branches. And to highlight, you know, some of our partners that we work with, like this is a Pioneer Event Center sponsored program with magician Larry Wilson performing at the North Valleys Library. And we've got some great photographs of that. And then a feature that we've added since I've been on the team is the Meet the Librarian feature, which I'm really proud of, where we highlight a different staff member. In this current issue, it's Pam Larson, who's the the lead librarian on the bookmobile. And we talk to them about what they do and why they do it and to give some insight into why we do the things we do and for people to understand that the people who work at the library are people and what our priorities are and why we do the work that we do. And it's a chance for them to talk about, you know, what they like to read and why, what programs that they like and to highlight other things. So it's a different way for us to highlight and promote the services that we provide, including this issue is the bookmobile. We're currently deep into working on the summer edition of Explorer Magazine and the Explorer Magazine is going to be, the summer edition is going to be focused on the Incline Village branch. Because the Incline Village, like Spanish Springs, is celebrating 20 years this year. So we're going to be highlighting some great things about Incline. And part of what we're doing with that too is that we want to highlight the fact that the libraries are community centers. And part of what makes the library community centers is that almost all of our main branches have regular rotating art exhibitions. And that the libraries, in addition to being a place to go for knowledge and to be going, going for, you know, events and programming, but are places to go for art experiences. And we do a lot of partnerships with a lot of different arts organizations in town, including the Pioneer Center, like I mentioned, Holland Project, Nevada Museum of Art, Discovery Museum, The Generator, Rooker Theater, a lot, and that's just some of them. We do a lot of partnering and we have rotating gallery exhibitions at almost all of our libraries. And that they usually feature primarily local artists. So we have, it's a way for us to connect to that part of the community and the artist part of the community. And we, you know, during the summer here, we have Art Town, which we, I spent like a week of my life putting all of our events into the Art Town book for the summer. But the idea is that people will come and put up, pick up a copy of the Art Town booklet and also pick up an explorer and be like, oh, there's all these arts events that are happening here. There's all, you know, there's theater events, there's magicians, there's, you know, all these different services that we provide here at the library, different programs that we do. And that they could start to think of us as an arts destination and a place that they can go and see gallery exhibitions and see artwork. And that's part of the idea that we're going to be doing with the Summer's Explorer, is to really push the libraries as an arts destination. What else? So we also do social media engagement and we post daily on, on Instagram, Facebook. We also do some on X and Blue Sky, a couple other ones sometimes, but those are the primary ones that we do focus. We have a YouTube channel as well. And then we push out there to promote all of our events and including our partner events. And you know, just like, just today, for example, we have an event coming up this weekend at the Sierra View, Sierra View Library that we did a partnered post with Nevada Humanities on because they're sponsoring that event. So we do, the marketing and communication department also helps facilitate some of our partner relationships. Anything I missed? Anything I want to add?
Did you want to talk, do the summer reading part? You want me to take? So yeah, we can talk about the summer reading challenge. I can take a little bit of that if you'd like. So summer reading challenge we do, we have people at the branches that do the grunt work on that every year. They're the ones that you'll see really pushing the program, helping kids and adults get signed up. We partner with the friends to have them provide prize, book prizes for adults. So sorry, the branches do a lot of the heavy lifting, but we do the marketing for it. So we work with, this year we worked with Russell at Incline Village to design the reading log. He's a fabulous designer. He designed the reading log. We'll have, we'll have it available in English and Spanish. And we're also going to be do a lot, doing a lot of marketing for that. We'll have two pages devoted to summer reading in the, the Summer Explorer issue and we'll be pushing it on social media and hopefully pursuing some other partnership opportunities with that to get the word out. Do you want to talk about?
Yeah, video content, we, we've done some over the years and we hope to do more. Like I said, we have a YouTube channel that has a lot of contents on it. And then we also put, push some stuff out just strictly on Instagram and Facebook. What's the next slide? Are we ready for that now? That's pretty much it, yeah.
One of the things we'd like to do with, oh, sorry guys. One of the things we'd like to do with video content creation is really just develop more of that. We know that a lot of different libraries are, are creating really creative videos to promote themselves and we're, we're going to really work hard on kind of upping our game in that area. So expect to see more hopefully fun and witty, interesting videos coming your way soon. Community partnerships, I think that was the last thing. I think Brad touched on that a little bit already. And we, we really rely on our community partnerships with local arts entities, PBS Reno, Nevada Humanities. So we, we really believe in the strength of our community. And so we would ask all of you to follow along with what we're doing and please follow us on social media. We are available on all of the website, the sites listed there. So Facebook, Instagram, Blue Sky, X and YouTube. And please look for the Summer Explorer coming your way very soon. Thank you.
Jane, thank you so much. That's great. Thanks for the faces. Thanks for, thanks for all the work you do and I really appreciate the Explorer Magazine. It's terrific. And if we could get more copies at the Chamber of Commerce, we have 100 people a week who come by looking for things to do in the community. I'd love to get more copies so we can distribute those to visitors and residents.
That sounds great. Yeah, we want, we've been really trying to put it out so that it's in more places. The coffee shop problem around the corner here has got it there too. And it's nice to see it when, you know, we pop over there to get coffee sometimes. It's nice to see, you know, people picking it up there. So yes, if anybody has a business in town, they want to have the Explorer Magazine in your business, let us know. We're happy to give you some copies. Or if you just want to have some in your living room, it's a great idea.
Thank you so much, Brad.
One moment, trustee Moser, I just wanted to see, what is the date of publication for the Summer Explorer?
We usually try to come out at the first month for each season, so it'd be June 1st.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Thanks guys.
Thank you so much, Jamie. Appreciate your report. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Jane. We will now move to item number three of the agenda, public comment, which has a three-minute time limit per person. We have a very long list tonight of over 48 public comments. I'm going to call people three at a time. So if there are people outside of the room or upstairs due to the, due to the overflow, they can be prepared to speak so that we're not waiting several minutes for someone to get in. We are going to start with Nicole Harris, followed by Valerie Wade, followed by Mary Lucia Bechtold. Let's start with Nicole.
And do we have a timer? Thank you. Good evening, trustees and the audience. My name is Nicole. Sorry about that. Let's just see if I can use my big girl voice. My name is Nicole Harris. Oh, they can't hear us online. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Nicole Harris. I'm currently a resident in South Valleys Library. I use that a lot. I also interact with a lot of different groups, different individuals here. I think one of the things that we have gone through in the last year, year and a half is how we have been embattled in this struggle between leadership, whatever else. What I would like to concentrate on today is talking about how are we going to go forward to repair all those feelings? Because feelings don't go away. It's like a bad divorce. You keep thinking about it in the, in the past. You want to do something in the future. What do we need to do to demonstrate that we will come together as a community? I find it's really hard when we have embattled leaders and we're trying to repair something that is not going to be repairable. So I am asking for more transparency, which everybody likes to talk about, however, how you implement that. My dad told me a long time ago, if you want to follow a company, what you do is you focus on the leader. So if you want to buy Berkshire Hathaway, you will focus on Mr. Warren Buffett. That person will tell you how it's going to go. So I would like to invite our library trustee, our community to come together to figure out how we become a world-class library system. I believe we can do that here in Nevada. I believe we have the money, the resources. I believe our community leaders and citizens want to help. However, we need to have strong leadership. We have to have clear, direct input from all aspects and it must be done like we are doing a company. If we can send someone to the move, I think we can handle this. So I believe that the trustees, as well as everyone in this room and those that are on Zoom, all have good intentions. Now becomes execution and how we bring it together. That's what I'm here today to speak about. And I applaud you for taking the difficult steps. It's not been easy the last year, two years, and yet I don't see us proclaiming the successes we have. We just heard from the Markcom. I'm a user of the library, but I'm not into all those different things. So thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Wade. Next, Mary Lucia Bechtold.
For the record, Valerie Wade, White Penn Sparks resident, signed up to speak on the issue of your library director. Too late, you already made that happen. I saw there was an urgent call to action by the self-assigned Port Police to come down here and demand your director's termination. I wanted you to know they are a minuscule fraction of our larger community and they in no way speak for me and my family. I had a few simple questions to ask yourself when you were deciding whether you would align with the larger community or villagers with pitchforks. And I'm going to ask you anyway, because you're going to have to deal with this now. What's next? What is the goal? You now have an organization with no director at a time when funding is moving to a low not seen in thirty-plus years. So what's next? How are you going to replace the director? Have you ever participated in a recruitment at this level? Do you know what that requires? How much time it takes? How long did it take to fill this position last time the Washoe County Library System was funded and expanding and had a board of trustees that was respected and respectful? What candidates are going to apply? What qualified candidate in their right mind will leave their current position to come and work for you after watching these trustees meetings online? How long will the library system be without a director? What is the job besides reporting to you and the groups focused entirely on porn? What's not getting done while the position is vacant, starting tomorrow, I have to assume? Are there current staff that want to step into this buzzsaw and finish their careers like this? With a board that aligns with bigotry over and over and insists on the spoon-fed information that is completely noble if they made any effort to learn it? With a board that is deliberately obtuse in the face of the information provided to them? That is frequently publicly disdainful and hostile to library staff who do the real work of the library system every day? The last question I want to do to ask yourself, too late now. Is it a good idea to park your car on the railroad tracks because you don't like the parking options? Or should you think through that strategy? So what's next? Do you have any idea what comes next? Please start focusing on the critical issues facing the Washoe County Library System. It is not porn. Funding, facilities, staffing, services. Do your job. I will end with this. If there are nine bigots at a table and you sit down with them, then there are ten bigots at the table. Thank you.
Joni Hammond. Joni Hammond. And following Joni, Drew Rebar and Cliff Nellis. So Joni, are you here?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Trustees. I'm Joni Hammond. I thought about ceding my time, given that Director Scott resigned. But on the other hand, I decided you needed to hear this regardless. So I have two areas to discuss with you tonight. First, the budget discussion at the last two meetings. I found these discussions to be uninviting and rude. The library director appeared to be out of sorts because all of you were asking questions. Why was the board not involved in the building of the budget? Why were many of the answers, "Well, we haven't done that this way before." So what? Why was the budget submitted to the county without the board's review? The second item is, and I think you should think about that when you hire your new directors, to give them direction. The second area is, I've spent some of the happiest times of my life in a library. I'm sorry to say that does not include Washoe County Library. I no longer even check out books online or in a library because of the culture and the atmosphere inside. Why is this? Under the current scheme of things, when I go to the library, number one, I'm watched and followed. Number two, when I have quietly, quietly and peacefully protested the busing of homeless people to the library. When I quietly and peacefully protested the busing of homeless people at the libraries, I was told by a librarian and their friend that "We keep files on all of you conservatives, pictures, home addresses, work families, and we keep copies of your public comments." Is that to be threatening? Why is that? After at least one of the board of trustee meetings, I've been followed to my vehicle and called names. This type of behavior is not welcoming, is downright mean. The culture needs to change, not just the director. We need a change. Even though the library director has resigned, the culture is still here. It needs to change. I look forward to the new director to be open and welcoming to all, even conservatives. Thank you.
Next, uh, I ask you to hold your applause, please. Next, Drew Rebar, followed by Cliff Nellis, followed by Alan Munson. Mr. Rebar.
Hi there, Drew Rebar for the record. Thank you for the three minutes. I greatly appreciate it. I also wanted to thank, uh, Chair Silver for her comments at the Board of County Commissioners yesterday. Library Board of Trustees should know what's in the budget before the county commissioners approve it. I, I think that's a wise thing to do. As far as what, uh, Joni was saying, the library does keep records on all of us. They have our pictures. They have a whole bunch of information. They're, they're kind of like a police agency in that. Hopefully that will change in the future. Um, I'm, I'm in their records, obviously. So are a bunch of other people in this room. With Jeff Scott resigning, I, I think that's a very good thing. My hope that we can get somebody that's neither left or wrong. I, I, I hope that we can get somebody that's very in the middle. Somebody that just wants to have everybody in the community, in the library, whether, whatever you want to be. The library should be available to all of the people. We shouldn't discriminate against, uh, Kirk Cameron's group that wants to come in and read books to kids like, like the library has been. Library trustees, I gave you all a copy of a amended complaint that I'm working on through the courts. But what's really important in that amended complaint that you look at are the records from the library, the emails, what they discussed, how they did things. It shows the violations of the law, shutting down the libraries, using library funds for pride events. And at the same time, discriminating against conservative groups. Again, everybody should have access, whether you're on the left side of the political aisle, right side of the political aisle, or hopefully you're just in the middle and just want everybody to have a good life. So I think this is a good opportunity for our community. As far as the budget goes, I think that's a very important thing. Looks like we were trying to take three million dollars out of the construction portion of the budget. I really do think North Valleys needs a library. As far as what's going on with your staff and the library employees. Well, today I went down to our center because I don't know if y'all know it, but, um, it looks like in the past few months, I've got to go back and ask for public records. But the bookmobile has been going to our center right before the board of trustees meetings. I found that rather interesting, so I went down there and recorded. And what I found was, I found two library employees down there running the bookmobile. And I think I saw two people go in there in the hour that I was there. I didn't see anybody leave with any books. So is that a good resource to, uh, spend our money on? Can, can our, our money be better spent than, than that type of thing? I think there's ways to cut and ways to balance the budget and make things work. So I really appreciate what's happened. I think this is a good thing for our community and hopefully we can all grow and prosper and do better in the future. Thank you very much.
She's telling me behind you to uh, another two-minute timeout is being requested. So a two-minute recess to see if we can reset the microphones. Thank you. Is she giving me the okay? All right, so should we, I should go exit the meeting again? And do you want people using that mic?
They can keep using that mic. Okay, so if it happens again, we're just going to talk to you. It's your call.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to let you know kind of where we're at.
Thank you so much. All right, may I ask that everyone? May I ask that we resume the meeting, please, with silence in the room? My mic is on. We are having interference this evening. And we apologize for that. Our IT specialists are on duty. I'm going to speak as loud as I can and I will ask everyone who steps up to the podium for public comment to speak as loud as they can and address the board, please, so that we can make sure we have your comments in the minutes and in the record. So we will proceed. I will again name the individuals who are due up next. Cliff Nellis, followed by Alan Munson, followed, followed by Ms. Barton. Mr. Nellis.
Yes, I would like to thank the board for, um, your service and I hope volunteer petition guy is doing.
May I ask for silence, please?
I think the libraries are needed. There's a lot of other resources that people have. I hope that there is a culture that invites the whole community to the libraries now. If it wasn't that case, we'll make it boring. I hope the libraries can adjust to the new director and to the will of the community. I, I come down here to express my opinion. I want to say clearly that we were not trying to ban books. Actually, if you go to Europe, the LGBTs are working to ban the Bible, really, seriously. And all we wanted was moving the books from the children's section to control. And, and that's what we were denied. I hope the librarians can create a culture that is inviting everyone from every perspective, including Christian conservative and, and American traditionals points of view, which is what I have. And, uh, so, yeah, that's about it. I want again to thank you. I think Mr. Scott knew how to vote before he goes. I would thank you that we're done with the world of people. And I look forward to helping to look for search for a new library that serves the needs of the whole community. And like, uh, as Sarah said, to bring the community to you.
And cue Mr. Munson. Followed by Ms. Barton.
Uh, I had a prepared speech and totally changed, so, but I just wrote some pretty I am a Washoe County citizen, fat player. And, uh, I would look for, uh, uh, in choosing a, a new director, I would like to see at some point, and kind of an open process so we could have, at some point, a conversation with that person. So that we don't create what we did create, you know, a split. But really, I think Drew said, and some other, uh, uh, you know, people said that let's, let's bring ourselves together and, you know, we can accept, uh, people's views. You know, the, the, the problem I have, one problem I have in terms of the view is, I, I think that pornographic books should just be, not banned, but just put in the adult section, uh, and, um, because I cannot get up here. And because I cannot get up here and start saying, you know, less sexist sexual stuff. So, you know, that's, it's just the common sense. It's our way. And maybe we could bring in, you know, somebody like you again. I know him personally, Kirk Cameron, bringing in through a kids program. And, you know, the programs that I've heard, they were wonderful. And there were so many good things that go on in the library. And we just need to make a few changes and let's try to bring ourselves, you know, bring together. There isn't hate or things like that. We don't have to do that.
Please address the board. Thank you.
You know, we don't have to do that. We can accept, as long as it doesn't break the law and the rules that comes. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Barton, followed by Alan DeCruros, followed by Maggie Bab.
Good evening, Ms. Chair, please. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. These comments were cut prior, but most of it still stands. So, my name is Like Marie Garden. I'm the daughter of a librarian, former circulation desk worker, and lifelong lover of books and the learning opportunities of library libraries. I've been a resident of Washoe County for 14 years, and in that time, my relationship with our libraries has changed. What began with focus on children's books and hands-on learning activities and drug on my son has transformed into increased online usage by me, you know, reading or listening to those in my home. Like so many others in our community, recent events have motivated me to show up in support of our public libraries and to work to prevent any erosion of the public's trust in our mission of our library, in the mission of our library system. Thus, what we have commissioned is to connect people with information, ideas, and experiences to support a rich and engaged community, one person at a time. I am sure that it is not often any of us that our participation in this meeting here tonight, as contentious as it was probably going to be, but may not now, is a perfect demonstration of the mission of college. Over the last week, I visited three libraries, Sparks, downtown Reno, and Sierra View, and thought all of them to be a welcoming space without reservation, without exclusion. At yesterday's meeting of the Washoe County Board of Commissioners, the question was raised about whether the libraries were funding services as they were intended. From my review of the program offerings of the libraries I visited just this week, it looks as if each of the goals laid out in the 2022-25 strategic plan were clearly targeted at program offerings. Stimulating imagination via drawing, music, and performance art. Promoting workforce building with book librarian appointments for assistance for job applications. Lifelong learning opportunities via language and hobby instruction, writing, and low-level degree presentations. Inclusive play groups and family engagement activities for school-aged children and teen gaming groups. Not to mention flyers specifically geared toward seniors, including managing chronic disease and offering a chance to check out blood pressure cuffs to sub-sixths. And almost all of these offerings are in conjunction with local partner organizations. If seeing is believing, it appears that these services being performed are exactly as intended. And a review of the data demonstrates the demand for books, both in-hand and online, is actually growing. Over a million checkouts in person and over 800,000 online in this fiscal year. In a survey of employee satisfaction, 87% of library employees responded as generally satisfied with their department, 71% passionate about their work, and 69% believing that they are providing quality public service. Higher rates than any other county employees and no smoking in today's bill. Tonight, I implore you, our library trustees, to review these positive developments and increase demand and delivery of services and overall positive employee feedback as a sign that things, though imperfect, are still functioning. We need all hands on deck to be laser-focused on this funding crisis and continue to find ways, or finding ways, to continue the vital public service our libraries provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan, followed by Maggie, followed by Tar.
Thank you, press keys and chair for the opportunities. This is Alan Decados for the record. Washoe County libraries provide an essential resource to our whole community. Only 43% of elementary students from Washoe County School District pass at or above the proficient level for reading. Washoe County libraries work with schools, student literacy, and they also provide preschool programs like baby and toddler storytime, which have been proven to improve language development and early literacy. As the previous speaker mentioned, the use of books by Washoe County residents has increased year by year, with 1.7 million checkouts in 2022, 1.9 million in 2023, and 2.3 million in 2024. The system has over 70,000 active visitors to visit libraries, with the highest number in the five to 12 week. Seniors are also frequent library users, with some seniors relying on the library as their only way to get online. Washoe County libraries play an important role in promoting literacy. And they also provide many other services. For example, the Northwest Spanish Springs and South Valleys libraries have served as wildfire evacuation centers. Library staff helped the Health District with contact tracing during the pandemic. The library helped bring high-speed fiber internet service to GIRLAP. And the libraries provide blood pressure kits. The libraries also provide technology help, free computer use, free library, I mean, free legal kiosks, resources for job searchers, resources for people looking for housing, and the kids cafe, which provides meals during school breaks. Washoe County libraries create a welcoming space for people to spend time. And on any visit to a library, you will find people doing the community puzzle, checking out free state park passes, using the printer, using the printers, or browsing for books. The Washoe County library system has the most amazing and well-trained staff, and our community relies on these library workers. In fact, a few years ago, I wrote a book, a biology book, and I used almost every single library in the system while writing that book. As we all know, the library system is in a budget crisis, and I would like to ask you to keep the library as stable as possible as the library experiences cuts to federal grants and the shrinking of the county budget. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maggie Bab. For the record, I want to address how local tensions are reflective of larger trends. Conversations about where books should be shelved or whether they should be included at all ties to professional organizations, funding, and the role of the library director and board are happening everywhere, leading to litigation and a chilling effect that prevents librarians and educators, educators like myself, I'm a teacher in the Washoe County School District, from doing their jobs. Larger forces are at work behind the scenes, and unless we are careful, we may fall into the same traps laid elsewhere. I would argue that we have now already fallen into the trap with the resignation of Joseph Scott. I won't rehash what you already know, what has happened in these meetings. The continued allowance of hate speech in public comment, allowing misinformation to go uncorrected, the book challenges, continual delays of library business. These sort of things also happen elsewhere in Nevada, in both school and library boards. In June 2024, protesters flooded our local school board meeting in order to read from books that they deemed inappropriate, although many of those folk were not even residents of our county, including a pastor from North Carolina. In November 2024, Clark County appointed two new trustees to the school board who were formerly part of their local chapter of Moms for Liberty, a political group that is often behind book challenges. And 13 books were challenged in that school district over the 2022-23 school year and the 2023-2024 academic years. In 2022, in Knight County, perump library trustees continually broke open meeting law, placed their library director on a rough administrative leave, and did not hire a replacement for almost a year. In the summer of 2023, facing at least one book challenge, the perump board chair told his new director to research what similar libraries were doing about children's books that dealt with race, gender, and sexuality. The library director gathered information from 42 libraries nationwide, only six of which decided to remove books. After hearing about the policies of those six libraries, the chair stopped the director from sharing the rest. Soon after this, just over one year after she was hired, the library director was terminated. We in Nevada are proud to be battle-born. Part of what that means is fighting for access to resources within our communities. Washoe County, you have the opportunity to lead by example, prioritizing the freedom of information afforded to us by the library system. Instead of following the lead of Knight County, we have an opportunity to shore up our libraries and make sure they can weather the coming storms ahead. Thank you.
Here, Decados, thank you for the opportunity to speak. In these meetings, multiple individuals have asked the trustees to take any number of readily available trainings so they can be empowered in their positions. Many have encouraged agendizing training and, during these meetings, showing the bite-sized training videos so that the trustees, as well as the public, can better understand trustee roles and responsibilities. These calls are not personal attacks, but are a plea for transparency. Some trustees have been forthcoming about how they engage with libraries. Others have grown defensive and given vague answers about the work done behind the scenes. I urge you all to share concrete details of how you fight for our libraries. Otherwise, we get to places like where we are today. Those of us who support the library and are also concerned about the lack of support we've seen from this board had planned to audit the director's evaluation in the packet. And we're going to go ahead and do that because it illuminates some of the problems with this board. I and some of the commenters after me will go section by section through the evaluations and compare the scores that the trustees gave with the criteria for the evaluation. In doing this analysis, we've been shocked to see the low scores seem to have no relationship to the criteria assigned. What facilitated the trustees' understanding of how to evaluate the director? And was any part of it informed by trustee best practices as determined by the organizations that set standards for library trustees? We, as a group that care about the library, ask over and over again, why was each score so low? My focus is Section 1, Strategic Planning Outcomes. Item 1, a score of 1.2 for development of a strategic plan update. The October 2024 agenda highlights the strategic plan priorities. If the concern is that the plan itself was not revised or updated, such updates could have been agendized, although it's unclear how the library could even think about an updated plan before knowing the fate of WC1. Nevertheless, there is direct evidence that the director and his staff have been implementing the existing plan and investing significant time into planning for the library's future. Why was this score so low? Items 2 and 3 are similar, a score of 1.6 for the draft library technology plan and plan to improve Spanish language services. In the March 2025 agenda, the director spent nearly. The director spent nearly an hour presenting the technology plan and Spanish language services. For the technology plan, the board only asked three questions, which took up three minutes. No questions were asked about the Spanish language plan. The board had an opportunity to ask for more information if they wanted it. Again, why was the score so low? I'm going to pass this now to Sections 2 and 4.
Rosie Zuckerman, for the record. I will go through Section 2, Operational Management, and Section 4, Community Stakeholder Engagement. For Section 2, Item 1, a score of 1 for developing a fiscal year 26 operating budget in wake of losing WC1 funding. In March 2025 meeting, the director made it very clear that he was not able to provide an actual operating budget until the county came to a decision regarding library funding after the loss of the expansion fund. Without actual numbers to work with, a budget is functionally meaningless. What he did provide to the board back in 2024, December, was a detailed contingency plan for how the library would handle the potential and catastrophic loss of funding. Item 2, a score of 1.4 for development of WCLS, Workplace Culture. This one is appalling. If there's anything that's been made abundantly clear to us during presentations and presentations to the board, it's that library staff are deeply engaged, committed, stimulated, and generally well-integrated into their workplace. There have been numerous library activities all across the county and impressive, detailed, and educational presentations conducted by library staff during these meetings. We've combined Section 4, Community Stakeholder Engagement, as the items are interrelated. Item 1, a score of 1.4 for director accessibility to community partners. Item 2, a score of 1.4 for communicating and coordinating with stakeholders. Item 3, a score of 2 for sharing information with the media and the public. Item 4, a score of 2 for a positive working relationship with WCLS partners. Every single agenda includes branch updates and updates from the director. In every single one of those agenda packets, we see the library system out in the community. Whether it's the Bookmobile or Book Initiative for incarcerated people going to schools to sign kids up for library cards, librarians have actively worked to host events, bringing the community to the library or bringing the library to them. Again, here in each section, we are asking, why are these scores so low?
Hello, my name is Ryan Stark. I've been a library card holder since 1986. At this library, the Reno Downtown Library, the coolest library on the planet Earth, I have never met Kirk Cameron. One time, I met Richard Greco. I have a few things to say. I'll focus on Section 3, Board Relations, which is particularly dismal. Item 1, a score of 1.4 for the implementing of the LBOT, Policy Directions and Philosophy. What exactly is the library's policy directions and philosophy? Has this ever been discussed in a meeting? Is the board concerned that their suggestions towards the library policies were rejected by the librarians to design the policies? Which suggestions were actually rejected by librarians, and why is that the director's responsibility? Item 2, a score of 1.4 for proactive communication of complete and accurate information. One need only flip through an agenda packet to see that the materials already presented demonstrate aptly that the director was very thorough in his presentations. In fact, one trustee previously complained about having the PowerPoint presentations within the agenda, despite it being part of an open meeting law. If there had been instances of inaccurate information, those should be provided. Item 3, a score of 1.2 for spending and budgeting. A criterion like this is merely objective. Have we seen evidence that the director has not been spending within the allocated budget amounts? Have we seen evidence of library funds being mismanaged or going missing? Have we seen, all we have seen are more books, more branches, more programs, more community outreach, all of the things a library should be doing with its money. Furthermore, there are regular budget updates provided to the board. These budget updates were October 24, December 24, January 25, February 25, and March of 25. Finally, a score of 1.2 for responsiveness for the LBOT feedback. This makes sense. The board of directors, the relations with the board of directors are not great. But neither are the board relations with the public or the board relations with each other. One trustee even said our dysfunction is on full display. Whatever dysfunction that has been found or fabricated for the board, for the director, begins and falls squarely upon the board. Thank you so much.
This is Ilya Arberman for the record. This is our final part of the evaluation. We're going to talk about the board comments, which I can't show you, and I wish we could see it up there. Comments 1 and 2 are personal attacks on the director, and with absolutely no thought put into the more specific feedback given. These remarks come off as defensive rather than reflective. Comment 3 is thoughtful. Thank you. Comment 4 is at least substantial enough to show respect for this process. If you want to see the comments I'm talking about, you can look at today's agenda. But it is also, unfortunately, reads like a defensive litany of excuses for something that could be corrected with the proper tools and training. Section 1 of Comment 4 puts responsibility for the failure of WC1 squarely on the director's shoulders, going so far as to condemn his, quote, "lack of effort" to create and maintain a good relationship with Washoe County. going so far as to condemn his, quote, "lack of effort" to create and maintain a good relationship with Washoe County voters. This is misguided and misinformed. Director Scott is the only reason there even was a Yes on WC1 campaign. He was the one that went out to community, educated us on the ballot initiative and on the process of forming a PAC, although he was careful to not be involved with the PAC after it was started because that would be illegal. He helped the Friends of Library hire a consultant and catalyzed library supporters into action. Those who worked on the Yes on WC1 campaign were shocked by the trustees that claimed to have done their part, and particularly by the trustee who actively worked against the ballot initiative. Section 2 of the comment claims the director gave zero answers as to the specifics of reductions after losing funding. I have here the December 2024 board packet, which specifically outlines exactly this information and provides precisely these allegedly missing answers. This is December 2024. How many people might be fired, which branches are gonna be closed? Downtown, three staff members could be lost, implying three staff members could be lost. Zero answers is not correct, they're all in there. Section 4 of the comment takes issue with the director not doing enough outreach with local businesses and service organizations. Look around. Here we have an excellent example of something the trustees could be proactively doing, their own community outreach and bringing new partners into the library system. We know that the director in recent years has worked with partners like KNR, COLO. He's launched initiatives that involve legal housing and public health partners. But the trustees see an opportunity to bring more partners into the mix. There's absolutely nothing stopping them from doing so. In fact, that is a reasonable expectation of their role. This comment seems to point more to a trustee area for growth. Now, of course, we can't reject the director's resignation. That's his choice. But it's very clear today that the reason he resigned is not because of his deficiencies, it's because of the board's dysfunction and because of the extremists that have taken over these meetings. I know you guys can't reject his resignation, but I know that us, as the public, will gladly accept the board's resignation so we can start from scratch and fix the library system. I do not see you people on a path to fix this. I see things only getting worse in the future unless you take responsibility for what has happened here today.
That's me, Jamia, for the record. This was written prior to the news of the director's resignation, so now it's not so much a cautionary tale, it's our terrifying reality. Taken as a whole with larger context, the achievements of the libraries over these past few years, the misinformation and disinformation around WC1 both before and after its failure, the national and statewide contexts, and our local struggles, the evaluation of the director by the trustees feels dangerously like someone else is pulling the strings. This evaluation does not give actionable examples of the director's minimal effectiveness, but it does demonstrate that trustees have not been given the adequate tools they need to do their jobs. These scores lack substance and reflect a defensive urge to displace accountability for the library's difficult position solely onto the director, when in reality, we are all to blame for the crisis in our local community and culture. But congratulations, you no longer have to work with a director you so clearly disliked. So here's a slight switch in focus to emphasize a critical point. Whatever happens with the library budget in June, trustees are expected to submit a new one in October. If the board has been unable to understand the budget over these last three meetings, where we went through the budget line by line, then six months seems not enough time to formulate a new one. It will also be the board's responsibility in that six months to look for and ideally hire and onboard a new library director and potentially a new trustee, given the commissioner's unwillingness to reappoint them. That is a lot to do in six months. And what happens if the board is unable to find someone satisfactorily in that time? Will Washoe County libraries become like Perump? The thought is chilling. It feels too late to say this, but we cannot continue to capitulate to the agendas of those who want to defund public institutions like the library. We need to take a decisive step to turn this tide and not allow divisive, destructive rhetoric to poison our public spaces and back us into these absurd dark corners. Had he not resigned, I have little doubt the library board of trustees would seriously be considering, if not outright firing, the library director at a moment when the library system is about to enter its biggest budget crisis in decades. I hope this is a nightmare we can wake up from. I hope we can find our way back to each other by rejecting the division in the room and holding ourselves accountable by supporting our cherished public institutions. Please remember, as trustees, your role is to fight on behalf of our libraries. We've gathered here because we care deeply about libraries. Washoe County library system is at a precipice. With this latest news, it is that much closer to the edge. Don't push it over in the coming six months.
My name is Carol Cook. I'm not a librarian, but hats off to all of the professional librarians here. I am a native Renoite and a third-generation Nevada lawyer who has spent a good chunk of my, my my years as a lawyer representing employers and management in labor and employment matters, both advising them and litigating on their behalf. I have listened to the comments before this board and the county commission, and I have visited several of the libraries to get a better sense of what's going on in the library. I do not have any direct knowledge of Mr. Scott's performance, but I have seen the friendly, clean, safe environment in the library. The library employees themselves seem happier than other county employees, according to a survey. I have never, ever been followed, threatened, intimidated by any library employee. I must say, I have seen board members say they don't understand the budget, they don't understand the county personnel and evaluation process, not all have even visited all of the branches of the library, and most appear not to have taken all of the required board training. There's a real disconnect, and it's especially troubling when this board is deciding who's going to run this outfit on a day-to-day basis. As a lawyer, this leads me to think about supervision. One of the paramount duties of this board is to supervise the director. Unless there has been some closely guarded, ongoing process, I'm not convinced that this board has done its job at all. What supervision occurred? Supervision is hard work. It's not gossip, it's not political interference, it's not an occasional comment or occasional ad libit or problem. It's continued monitoring and communication between the employer and the employee. It's documented, it's data-driven, it's plain, hard, ongoing work by board members. In these turbulent times with money in short supply, I hope the board will work with whoever that person is, who will be your director. The very last thing this board is ready and prepared to do is to get mired down in the search and hiring process for a new director. I don't think you're up for it. You owe it to the community to engage in a meaningful relationship with each other.
Janet Butcher, for the record. I'm sorry that the board has to undergo vicious attacks, and I know that I'm gonna get hate speech signs in the back of me, but God bless them. I appreciate that the board has stepped up and become a guardian of the money. That's one of their tasks. Asking for fiscal, and that's F-I-S-C-A-L, responsibility is not hate speech. I believe you have a daunting task ahead of you, but I have confidence, in what I've seen from this board in the last few months, actually, that you will be up to the task. I have looked at your resumes, I've looked at your backgrounds, and I believe that you will have the ability to do it and do it fairly. You know what you need to be looking for, and you know what needs to not happen. We don't need to have someone who has a personal agenda to set forth. Chair Silver, I know you have a background that you've had to hire people, and you've probably had to look at budgets. Gianna Jackson, the trustee Jackson, I know she has. Lee Moser, I know you deal with numbers and the type of business that you're in. I believe that you do a lot of figuring and stuff. I'm not sure, I know that trustee Ruff was a librarian, and trustee Rodriguez, who was the second vice chair of the Washoe Democrat Party. I'm sure they will do, you all will do a good job and do us right. Thank you. I heard yesterday, at the commissioner meeting, how much people ripped into the fact that you guys weren't doing your job. You are doing your job, finally. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy Pulver. I began attending library board meetings in November because of my distress at the outcome of WC1. And because I had heard disturbing things and read disturbing things about the meetings of this body, I was shocked by what I found, but that's for a different night. You were to have been conducting tonight a 90-day evaluation of the director. There were possible outcomes on the agenda. The comments that I wanted to make are even more relevant now and even more urgent. You all need to think strategically. I have not seen that from you. First, we're about to enter a challenging six months, regardless of the outcome of what the, of what the director's evaluation was. If the commissioners decide to pass that budget with the staff recommendations for flat funding and for the board of this library board to work with the Board of County Commissioners to reimagine library services between now and October, where's your leadership? You don't have any. You don't have any up here, and you just accepted the resignation of your library director, a very qualified professional. Secondly, searches for such important positions are costly and time-consuming. In my opinion, it would have been foolhardy to have dismissed him to embark on this important work at the same time you're trying to put together a budget for the most challenging time that the library has seen over many, over a long period of time. As with most professions, librarians are very well-connected and very collaborative. To do, this is not going to be a secret within the library world, and it will give many qualified candidates pause about working in such a hostile environment. Thirdly, you should be considering how the citizens of Washoe County and the libraries are best served. It's not by firing the director, but that water's gone. I urge you to think strategically. Can't, I was gonna urge you to work with Director Scott, but that's no longer possible. I urge you to use the resources the county keeps offering you, and you keep rejecting because you know better than they do. Focus your collective skills and experience on developing a plan for library services that balances the budget cuts. You were appointed by the commissioners. You are, however, volunteer public servants accountable to us. We expect you to learn your jobs, to ask questions respectfully, and then act on that information. We expect you to work on our behalf as a professional, transparent-
Hello, my name is Jennifer Caskey, and I am a Renoite from Washoe County resident. I grew up in these libraries, and as did my children and now my grandchild. I love these libraries. It is particularly disheartening to come before you today, looking in from the outside. Washoe County libraries have been diminished by the demands of angry extremists who have become a depressing and discouraging fixture at these and other public meetings. The goal of these individuals is to destabilize, dismantle, defund, and as stated by at least one of the contingent, altogether dissolve our cherished Washoe County library system. Through violence and intimidation, Drag Queen Story Hour has been cut off from library programming, despite being an enormously popular and successful event. Through international, I'm sorry, through intentional misinformation, WC1 failed at the polls, threatening the future of the library budget. Library business has been delayed again and again, instead of centering the manufactured outrage. And here we have the, I'm sorry, I needed to bring my glasses, the library scapegoated for the system the system's current crisis, which plays exactly into these extremist hands. I was flabbergasted to hear that a trustee went before the Board of County Commissioners to advocate against the funding of the library system by asking for a few more weeks to go over a budget that has been explained in excruciating detail. For example, look at January's meeting where nearly an hour was spent on the budget, or further back in October 2024, when the budget was broken into large categories. Undoubtedly, the director and the library staff have a responsibility to the trustees to create presentations and keep the board well-informed on the inner and outer workings of the library system. But trustees, too, have a responsibility to educate themselves and come prepared so that information brought by the director and the library staff can be acted upon as opposed to examined for what comes off as the first time. There are ways for trustees to show initiative that don't violate open-meeting laws. Whatever work the trustees are doing behind the scenes, we'd love to hear about the specifics. Whatever relevant educational resources the trustees have, we'd love to know them. When we come to these meetings and read evaluations like the one today, what many of us find is not evidence of poor performance by the director, but evidence that the trustees have not been given the tools they need to thrive in this role and are misdirecting their personal dislike of the director onto his job rather than acknowledge a general failure of this entire process involving the trustees, the director, the county, and members of the public to certain, the library and the community. I obviously wrote this before what happened to happen at the beginning of this meeting. But for the record, my name is Jennifer Cole, and I am a librarian at the South Valleys Library. I'm here to express my support for and ask you to please retain Director Scott. The Washoe County library staff has weathered a lot of adversity over the last several years, yet employee satisfaction is about 8.5% higher than average county departments, according to the Employee Satisfaction Survey in this packet. Why do we still love working for the library after struggling to provide service through a global pandemic, having our motives and professionalism repeatedly questioned in public forums, being yelled at, harassed, injured, and threatened in our workplace, and having an organized disinformation campaign waged against us, resulting in the loss of our dedicated funding source? The answer is strong leadership. Director Scott understands that the number-one resource of any thriving public library is its staff. He supports us, trusts us, and allows us to do what we are here to do. Even more than pay and benefits, Washoe County library employees answered that we are here to, we here, we are here and plan to stay here because we are passionate about our work and believe in providing quality customer service to our community. If you care about retaining passionate, creative, and dedicated staff, please do not throw us further into uncertainty and chaos by removing our trusted leader. Well, that's too late now. But I would also, I would like to take the rest of my time a little bit to say thank you to Director Scott for taking the repeated and unrelenting abuse to try to shield the rest- the repeated and unrelenting abuse to try to shield the rest of us from that. I can only hope that the next person that comes along will be as brave and as fearless in supporting his staff or her staff. Thank you.
Before my time starts, am I using the microphone or just speaking loudly? Good evening, Kate Salim for the record. Over the past year, I've observed multiple concerning issues regarding this board that I believe warrant immediate attention. One, there have been instances where board members have seemingly had undisclosed conflicts of interest with individuals coming before the board. These relationships should have been revealed before deliberation and ideally recusal would have been appropriate to maintain impartiality. Two, the board's understanding and adherence to open meeting law appears to be insufficient. The board seems to have a bare minimum understanding of OML. Thankfully, DA Kaplan has been in the room to recourse, to course correct in preventing potential violations, but it leads one to wonder if there are other violations that the public are not aware of. Transparency and full compliance with this law are crucial for public trust. Three, the director Scott review process is deeply concerning. Despite clear guidelines and prior assurances, this board based its assessment on events beyond the designated three month window indicating a fundamental misunderstanding or intentional disregard of the proper procedure. Four, pursuing the director's termination before budget finalization risks significant and avoidable taxpayer costs, including recruitment and potential legal fees as seen in other jurisdictions. This is fiscally irresponsible. Five, the public berating of Washoe County employees by board members reveals a lack of professionalism and an inability to collaborate and a failure to maintain appropriate decorum in public meetings. Six, this board has failed to maintain a safe and respectful public comment period by permitting verbal abuse, profanity, and racist, racist and homophobic comments. Allowing this behavior despite posted restrictions creates an unsafe environment that under, undermines free speech. Seven, we understand you are volunteers. This was a choice and it comes with the expectation of fulfilling your duties responsibly. You weren't constricted, conscripted. In conclusion, these issues, undisclosed conflicts, potential open meeting law violations, a hostile public comment environment, unprofessional conduct towards county employees, a flawed director review process with potential financial repercussions, collectively paint a picture of a board that needs to significantly improve its governance and oversight. I urge you to take these concerns seriously and take immediate action to address them for the benefit of the library, its staff, and the residents of Washoe County. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you for your volunteer service and the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Colin Robertson and I'm here to speak in support of our county's public library and the critical funding they rely on from my county tax money and those tax dollars from all of us here, including yourselves. I think today a decent person has resigned a position that will be difficult to fill well given the division that has been sown by some in our community and the sometimes dysfunction of this board as a body. That's complicated, of course, but it's also simple. Some in our community want libraries to be about open, free access to information, ideas, and the very basis of knowledge. Others want to try to narrow access to learning, not expand it. Libraries are more than just buildings filled with books. They are civic and cultural hearts of our community. They provide free access to information, technology, and educational resources for people of all ages and backgrounds. For many, the library is the only place where they can use a computer, print a resume, or get help with a job application. We've heard tonight about our, how our libraries support early literacy, offering story times and reading programs that help children develop crucial skills before they even enter school. How they serve seniors, students, job seekers, families, and lifelong learners, all at no cost. Libraries are safe, welcoming public spaces, something that's increasingly rare. In times of crisis, libraries have stepped up to distribute masks, food, evacuation safety, and even serve as emergency shelter. They're staffed by skilled professionals who help patrons navigate from research questions to housing needs and legal information. The current budget situation for the county is challenging, as I know you know. So I implore you as the leaders ultimately responsible for our library services and our library's fiscal sustainability to do everything in your power to advocate for the budget resources necessary to continue the vibrant operations like you've heard about here tonight. Given the county's budgetary situation, it's possible that the collections developed in budget of the library system in Washoe County will be reduced from $1.4 million to $55,000. Public access to the Free Lib app alone, used by thousands of patrons, will be financially out of reach. You've accepted a resignation tonight. There's little more to do on that front at this point. Now you will need to do your jobs to steward our library system in the absence of that director. Please take that responsibility seriously.
I had a very different comment written, so wrote this pretty quick. Been a frustrating turn of events. Drag Queen Story Hour was killed through violence. WC one was taken down by misinformation. And now after all of the pressure, as long as I've been attending, we've lost our director. A small but incredibly loud group has succeeded through means I'm not willing to sink to. So I say this with all honesty. I really hope that the chaos can finally stop. All of their goals have been achieved. I hope this can stop. I hope this era of disruption, manufactured outrage, relentless attacks is finally over. Because this has taken a toll, not just on our libraries, but on the community. Our librarians have been through so much. And through it all, they've continued to show up for this community. They've continued to serve, to welcome, to adapt, and to do hard work of, of public service under enormous pressure. It's time we focus on them now. Let's give them peace, support, and the respect that they have more than earned. I hope we can all move forward with clarity, purpose, and support for the people who are still here and doing the work. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Kelly Williams. Just was reminiscing today and I was remembering the first time I walked through those doors upstairs. I was 12 and it was 1978. And I thought this was the most beautiful library I'd ever seen in my entire life and it had to be the most beautiful library in the world. It was so peaceful and warm and inviting. And I just remember looking up and seeing the levels of books and bookcases. I was in 12 year old heaven. I would find books that would take me on adventures and places I will never see myself in this lifetime except in here. I would come here and scour the card catalog for books for writing assignments when I was in high school. And with the help of the librarians, they were always so kind. And I do want to apologize once again to all the librarians for the unfortunate incidents with the card catalog in 1982. I'm still very embarrassed and again, I'm so sorry. It, that's a story for another time. So librarians are really truly special people. Sadly, today I am here and it's I'm here in a, in a place I found so much comfort and joy and I'm sad to say it has turned into the most toxic environment I've ever been in. It's heartbreaking. The anger, the vitriol, the bitterness, and the hate are palpable. What a juxtaposition to my childhood memories. Still love the library though. I'm not sure what happened to so many of the people in this room to cause them to hate the library like they do and and want to see it to its destruction. It's mind boggling. I would ask you to please do some deep reflection and ask yourself, what makes you so angry and so bitter? Destroying our library system will not fix you. Only you can do that. And like the sign on the door asks, be mindful of the energy you bring into the space. I love that sign. Thank you for putting it up librarians. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jen Archer. Here for public comment. I can't pretend to represent the views of all Washoe County here or the library or its employees. In fact, I know I do not represent the views of each member of the library staff or everyone here. I also know that the views I am going to express are not mine alone. There are significant problems in the library system, perhaps foremost among these significant problems is among staff and the board, and then also an incredible sense of anxiety. Where does anxiety come from? Uncertainty. There's a great deal of uncertainty about the future of the library. And there's uncertainty about the future of our community, of our country, and of our planet. I'm here as a library lover. I have very fond memories of the library and I do also want to add that this is one of the most beautiful libraries I've ever been to. And I try to visit libraries, you know, any city that I'm in. I hate that I have to worry about the funding of a library and that an institution like the library is going to just lose more than it already has been. Many library staffers fear that they're going to lose their jobs. The combination of an under allocated budget and hiring freeze will mean that many library staffers will remain in interim or transitional roles. These are part timers who are going to be, who long to be full time. Interim branch managers who long to be branch managers, library assistants who long to be librarians. With the current tenor of anxiety, it's difficult for library staff to focus on basic operations, let alone programming like art events, technology, education courses, or story times. And yet they persevere. And then we worry that the library might lose hours of operation or that they will lose staff. Some of the best and brightest have already left the library. The library is currently besieged by anti-intellectual and anti altruistic forces. These forces cannot conceive of disinterested intellectual curiosity or disinterested generosity or kindness. And so they concoct ludicrous conspiracy theories. The library is not a grift. The library is a free space. Nobody has ever gone into library science thinking it was going to make them rich. They like helping children learn to read, like me. I am an ESL kid and reading and then being able to read in a place like the library taught me how to speak English. You know, so it's very personal and important also. They provide free internet to job seekers. They've helped seniors learn to access information through new technology. The library's budget now and in the future is uncertain. The library staffing is uncertain. The wolves are at the door and now is not the time to move the law.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Laura Wade and I'm here today to express my support for Director Scott and my disbelief at the Board of Trustees' lack of support. From my understanding, Director Scott has the support of the librarians and has improved community activities. The budget has been walked through line by line at the meetings I have attended and I don't understand the director's low score on some of these categories. I would like to be walk through each score on the evaluation and I would like to understand why that score was granted. I also think that the board listens to a vocal minority instead of going out into the community and seeing the majority of support that the libraries have. I do not stoop to attacking people when I support the library and I hope that the Board of Trustees value that. As a queer person who loves to read, I haven't seen myself represented in the literature until very recently. And I rely on the library to be able to read queer books. I put the responsibility of that on your shoulders. And I also put the responsibility of maintaining a safe space for me at the library on your shoulders. Additionally, as a professional, I am aghast at one of the trustees as she walks around when, when the Spanish Springs speaker was presenting. I feel like it's very unprofessional. I'm very disappointed that the board members have not visited all the branches, especially trustee Moser, who from my understanding has, is a long serving board member. I think I've visited more branches. I just want to support the libraries and I hope that the Board of Trustees do more in the future.
Hi, Jason Love for the record. I just want to say that I am deeply disheartened to learn about the departure of Director Jeff Scott and the circumstances surrounding his exit. It's crucial to recognize without a forward thinking and innovative leader like Director, Director Jeff Scott, our programming and the diversity of our libraries will suffer. As you begin to search for his successor, I really urge the board to prioritize candidates who value the importance of diverse programming, especially regarding our queer community. I also wanted to express my discontent with the perceived weight given to the personal relationships in the 90 day review. I think that it's appalling that your personal relationships were weighted higher than community stakeholders or operation management. I think that allocating a quarter of the review to how well you communicate with the director suggests your focus maybe more on a personal agenda rather than the community's needs. I strongly recommend that the board reconsider the aspect of the review, perhaps by removing this category altogether or by increasing the weight of other categories potentially incorporating feedback from the library staff. I also wanted to emphasize the importance of maintaining professionalism during board meetings. Felt like it was really inappropriate for the board member to lose composure during your announcement, Chair Silver, and to engage in side conversations with the audience. This behavior detracted from the seriousness of the meeting and I hope that the board will just, will strive to conduct itself with greater deform in the future. Thank you for considering my comment.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. This is Krista Flanagan for the record. I've been living in Washoe County for over 10 years and I'm a former University of Nevada graduate. I've only been involved with these meetings for a few short weeks, so I can't say I'm familiar with the years of history between the board and Director Scott. I can only go off the report that was supposed to be discussed in today's agenda. I know given recent announcements, a lot of that has changed, but it's still worth talking about this report. And to put it very bluntly, this report does not inspire confidence in the board's processes. I understand there was at least one supportive comment for Scott, but the majority was not and that is what I have to go on today. Despite the fact that Director Scott's accomplishments outnumber the slides listing his issues in that very same report, the board majority gives out the impression they are out for a witch hunt rather than supporting libraries the best they can. Why is the board pulling up issues from Drag Story Hour, a situation nearly a year old now in a 90 day review? Why is the board criticizing language on Washoe County one rather than having spent time clarifying that language for the community? Why are board members posting on social media about how they don't want to fund libraries according to KUNR? It is not immediately clear where the board's majority's loyalties lie, but it does not appear to be with Washoe County libraries. The only thing immediately clear is that the board majority was more concerned over firing a competent library director rather than how to best support the library at a time when libraries lost 4.5 million in funding. And if that is not the most pressing issue to the board, what is? If you do not support libraries in their entirety, why are you here? Thank you.
Chris Parks for the record. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to give a shameless plug for my local library branch, the Spanish Springs Library. I might be a bit biased, but that is the best library in all of Washoe County. Even though there are some folks there on the staff that don't think much of me, that's quite common throughout the library system. In fact, I've got over 10,000 pages of emails that clearly demonstrate that. However, I don't envy your position. Previous boards, and I've been doing this since 2018. Previous boards of trustees abdicated their duties and responsibilities to the library director. They didn't take their role seriously, not like what I'm seeing from this board. And I, speaking for a lot of people in Washoe County, in fact, the vast majority appreciate that. In your search for a new library director, I certainly hope that you will find one that has integrity, moral character, one that recognizes the authority. moral character, one that recognizes the authority of the Board of Trustees, one that is not openly disdainful of you, and uncooperative. I've been here to these library board meetings, and I have watched in utter amazement that you've requested information. That it took two years, two years before you people actually saw a budget, or at least financials. Did you see the budget proposal that was submitted to the county before it went? That's your job. I'll bet you didn't. Not your fault. You've inherited a mess. I was here when you asked for a meaningful evaluation process. Two years ago, December in fact, two years ago. And you were hosed, not just by HR, but by the county manager's office. You can't be effective in your jobs if you're not getting the support that you have to have. Again, I don't hold you responsible for what you're not getting. And you weren't getting a lot, just like members of the public. Do not know the whole story. I will not reveal those 10K pages of emails. It would be personally embarrassing to too many people. Know this, Board of Trustees. You have the support of the majority of Washoe County.
Thank you all for your time. This is Laura Weatherington for the record. Yesterday, I learned of a video of the Republican Women of Reno meeting from December 2023, where Trustee Jax, then a trustee, said that she, quote, "Asked Santa to please don't give us any new taxes for the library right now." "The Washoe County library director is going to advocate for a new tax to keep his programs funded. He'll probably use that tax money to promote even more drag queen story hours," end quote. I already knew that WC1 didn't pass in part because the official Republican voter guide listed it as a new tax. Now I know that a Washoe County library board trustee was feeding the Republican Party this disinformation. I'm sorry, I quoted, and I have called it disinformation. Is that a personal attack, or is that just labeling? So, I'm not going to spend time detailing all the ways that her statement is factually wrong and misleading by insinuating that Drag Queen Story Hour was part of the budget, or asserting that WC1 is a new tax. But I will say that your board has a crisis of integrity. This is 30 years of library funding that Trustee Jax helped torpedo through outright lying and misrepresentation. It will have to be up to someone else to answer the question of whether these deliberate, false public statements constitute malfeasance under Nevada statutes, and therefore grounds for trustee removal, but I raise the question here. I do not know the labor laws in Nevada, nor the board's regulations in hiring and firing the director. But I urge you all to study all applicable laws and consult with legal experts before you take any action on the director's position. From my vantage point, and I'm an occasional observer here, it looks like this 90-day evaluation creates a specious argument of incompetency in order to, in a time of countywide budget woes, terminate the person with the deepest understanding of the staffing, budget, and constituent needs of the library. I suspect that at least one member of the board wants to do this in order to replace the director with someone who holds conservative social views and will mold the library's programming for that purpose, rather than serving the whole of the county's population. I therefore urge the board members to sign their names to scoring and commenting in future evaluations. You all wield a tremendous amount of authority, and I'd like to see each of you vouch for your assessments. I can understand anonymity when evaluating superior, but that is not the case here. I urge this as a taxpayer who does not want the county to wind up with additional hiring or legal costs to further a political agenda. Thank you. I will also interrupt the transcript. We're not breaking?
To reconvene the meeting, if I could ask everybody to be seated, so we can move forward with public comment. Thank you. If you wish to have conversation, exit the room, please. Otherwise, we want to resume public comment. Thank you. We were about to start with Von Galen Zarcone, followed by Nancy Carlson, followed by Virginia Larmour.
Good evening. I came here to practice my one-woman show, and the audience is left, so I'm a little dismayed. No, levity. In this challenging and contentious time, most concerns with me is the impact that the director's seemingly non-optional resignation leaves our library staff in. These are the people who show up every day to serve our community, provide access to information, support families, students, and lifelong learners. They now have to move forward in the midst of uncertainty without the person they've worked with and relied on for guidance. If we care about the future of our libraries, we must also care about the people who make these libraries work. I urge the board to take this chance and this opportunity to move forward positively, to make clear and vocal support for our librarians, make that the priority in this moment, and to listen to their voices, trust in their expertise, and create stability that they may need to continue doing their very important work. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Nancy Carlson, and I thank you for allowing me to speak today. I don't envy you your job, board. I know you volunteers, and I know how hard you work, and I appreciate it, and I know we all do. I've been a homeowner in Washoe County for 30 years. I don't consider myself angry. I don't consider myself an extremist or disruptive, and I don't own a pitchfork. But I have had some concerns about the way the library system has been running. Question one on the ballot last November failed not because voters misunderstood the bill, but because the Washoe County library system is promoting divisive and political issues that have not been consistent with the majority, the majority of the public's values. The fact that we love our libraries, yet rejected this bill, is a strong statement that must be heard by the Washoe County Commissioners as well as the library board. There's no place in our schools or our libraries for promotion of political opinions that run contrary to the beliefs of many of its citizens. Some of the programs supported by the board are promoted without the support of a large portion of the public, and this is an issue costing our libraries financial support. The publication This is Reno states that a large percentage of residents do not feel comfortable in our libraries due to a radical agenda pushed on the patrons. The failure to serve and respect all of us within our community is a serious issue. This will not encourage residents to financially support our libraries until we all felt heard, especially when the county has a $27 to $85 million deficit, which I've heard both numbers. We can be better as a community, and we can support all of our trustees in their efforts to find a replacement for Director Scott. Thank you.
Years ago, I was on a bike ride with my kids in the trailer behind me. We came to a hill, and I thought I could make it. I quickly realized I'd underestimated the weight of my kids and overestimated my fitness. I started to huff and puff. My kids, sensing my struggle, began to cheer for me. "Come on, Mom, you got this." Now I had to make it. So I dug deep, and I pushed, and it was sloppy and ugly, but somehow I reached the top. I stopped to catch my breath and turned around to look at the proud faces of my children. And behind them were two treadmills, starting about halfway up the hill, because in all their enthusiasm, one of them had pushed the brake. You see, sometimes even with the best intentions, you can end up inhibiting the very effort we're meant to support. I intended to come here today to congratulate you on securing funding for the next year, but now does that not only seem premature, but I had to ask myself, why? What did any of you do in any grand public capacity to advocate for library funding? Director Scott wasn't permitted to do so, but you were. In fact, it's number nine on your list of duties as Washoe County Library Board Trustees. And how about number six on that list, where it states you must work with the director, library staff, and local politicians? The overt lack of respect for him, coupled with the belittling language in the review, makes it evident that very few of you ever tried to work with him in any real capacity, going so far as to say he doesn't take direction well. You know, there are trustee trainings that equip you with the skills to build that professional relationship, trainings that we, the public, have been begging you to complete for months now. That seems like a failure of number three. Be attentive to the concerns of the public. How about number two? Review materials prior to meeting. Recently, we had to sit through a line-by-line budget review, because most of you didn't understand the budget, and some clearly still don't. That's also a failure of number five. Acknowledge the annual budget. Finally, the review grossly undervalues the overall success of the library, as well as how much the library staff love their jobs and leadership. It was all there in the employee engagement survey. That's a failure of number eight. Monitor library effectiveness. You're so focused on pointing the finger that you can't see that the problem is right here. Is this feedback difficulty here? Is it upsetting? Does it seem, I don't know, unfair? It's the measure of a good leader by how well they can accept criticism, and how you react today will follow you the rest of your political careers. Either you take ownership in this, and let's not mince words here, ousting, or you prove to us that you truly are working against the effort you're entrusted to support. So with all due respect, and I mean that, ladies, I want nothing more than to see a board of five successful women be successful. Please take your foot off the brake. We have a hill to climb. Thank you.
Gail Townsend for the record. I come to these meetings because I support libraries. Three publicly-supported public libraries, an idea and an institution that was championed by the founders of our country. Libraries are an asset to the community. They are a place where everyone is welcome, and where current librarians work very hard to provide services to patrons throughout Washoe County. To the extent that people, the trustees, the director, the librarian, support the library, I support them. I am tamed to say I cannot support the library board of trustees. The trustees have not been advocates for the library. Instead, they've chosen to advance their own agendas and ideologies. The controversy that has beset the library since 2022 has nothing to do with Director Scott or with books. The goal of the protesters is not to improve, but to destroy the library. The tactic chosen to accomplish that goal is to demonize and erase the most vulnerable people in our community, young house, and people who identify as LGBTQIA, especially trans members of this group. I cannot sit by as these groups are attacked. I cannot sit by as these groups are attacked, and the attack is personal to me. My mother's family is from Eastern Europe. They're not Jewish, by the way. Nonetheless, my mother's cousins were arrested and sent to concentration camps. Some survived, and I met the next family events during my childhood. An uncle who went to ask why these children were taken met with summary execution. He was shot dead on the spot, murdered, because an official was given the authority to erase people he did not like. I take the words of Martin Niemoller to heart, and I know it is my duty to protect and defend and stand with the erased, even if I'm not a member of the group singled out for abuse. I am disheartened that the LGBT does not share my beliefs, rather than defend everyone's right to see themselves reflected in the library they've capitulated to hatred, antsy demonstrated by their hostility towards Director Scott. And I should point out that until this board, Scott was evaluated eight times. He was assessed as meeting or exceeding expectations. It can be seen elsewhere. In trustees' comments at the end of the December 2023 meeting, in May, June, and August of 24, when board members actively advocated in support of one of the protesters. It can be seen in the August meeting when, oh, thank you, I have comments to...
I may fall through some of this because of the events. What I was gonna say, I've had to modify a little bit. My name is Jeanne Brifith, and I am a resident of Washoe County. I was doing some research earlier in anticipation of making some remarks tonight. I was thinking about the term woke and how it has become a pejorative, that somehow it is a bad thing to be woke. According to Merriam-Webster, woke means to be aware, to be informed, to be enlightened. When did enlightenment fall into disfavor? Somehow, it is woke to not want to ban books. Prior to his resignation, some members of our community wanted the library director fired because he wouldn't remove or move pornographic materials from our library shelves. I'm not a fan of pornography. I personally believe it to be demeaning. I'm also not a big fan of science fiction, but I'm not demanding science fiction materials be removed from the premises. Recently, in the name of eliminating all things related to the allegedly woke ideology of diversity, equity, and inclusion, the military academies of our nation have removed books from their libraries that address the challenges many in our society have faced and occasionally overcome, including those challenges faced by people of color, challenges faced by women, challenges faced by gays and transgender folk. Maya Angelou's autobiography, I Know Why the Cage Bird Sings, is no longer on the shelves of the U.S. Naval Academy Library. You know what book remains there? Mein Kampf by Adolf Hitler. Today, some people wanted to fire our library director because he wouldn't get rid of what they deemed to be pornography. Next month, they may want to fire his replacement because he or she won't remove works by James Baldwin, or Alice Walker, or Salman Rushdie, or Margaret Atwood, or even Harper Lee. I began with a reflection of the meaning of woke. The reason for that is this: Folks who want to ban one type of book will not stop there. There will always be something they find offensive. To the members of the Library Board, you have the power and authority to stop this nonsense once and for all by supporting whoever his replacement is, someone who will demonstrate a commitment to providing a library system that ensures our community has the opportunity to remain fully informed and, dare I say, enlightened. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to begin by commending the report we had at the beginning of this meeting about the Spanish Springs Library. That was so encouraging, the importance of the library for the whole community, not just the books, but the many different media, the social activities, the interaction with the old and the young. It's indispensable. And I remember when this library was first being built, back in the mid-sixties, the thrill that we felt. You know, this was like science fiction, same time they built the penitarium of the human earth. And they built the Detzer Library, which that's already been repealed and replaced, you know. But Thomas Jefferson said, "They stake the full fate of this system they were creating, of control by the people, on the ability to be properly informed, that they would have the wisdom with the proper information to make sound and wise judgments, the rule of conduct." So when I hear lies that we want to dismantle the library system, that we're violent against people, that we're somehow book banners, that we're some kind of Nazi book burners, live not by lies, and that's what those are. Make no mistake. When I hear that they're assembling dossiers on people for simply speaking their opinion about something that we have every right to talk about, that is fascism. That is doxing. That should be illegal. And, but unfortunately, so ninety-eight percent of the work at the library has nothing to do with all this political nonsense. There's too much work to be done to stock libraries, to take care of the facility, like we heard about, Traxton Foundation. My God, that's gotta be addressed. And, you know, the community outreach, things for kids, literacy, people who learn the language, you know, from the immigrants of the country. This is important. We don't have time for the political foolishness. Please, I say, let's drop all that and go back to our core values of what a library is. We have to have it. We need it. We love our library. We thank you for your dedication, but please drop the BS, the political BS. It's infiltrated the law, journalism, education, medicine, every aspect of our country. It has no business there. Get back to our core duties, and I thank you.
Been a difficult way to hear everything today. Hi, my name is Heidi Young, and I'm a resident of Washoe County, and I use the North Valley Library on a regular basis using all kinds of their services. I'm speaking today in support of funding the proposal that's being forwarded to fund the library throughout the rest of the year. We can't allow our libraries to be cut down to only two days a week and cut our staff. As a parent whose child uses these programs, I find them necessary, and I need that we, I find it necessary that we support our libraries and continue to fund them to protect our future. Please remember who is getting hurt when you cut funding. It's our future and our children. I'm first on, I'm first on, yeah. Fantastic. Trustee, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak today before you. I want to echo some of the comments that have come before about the Spanish Springs Library, how amazing it is. Personally, we moved out there prior to its opening. Also, when it opened up out in the Spanish Springs area, it was a godsend. I have three kids. They were all pretty much raised in that Spanish Springs Library, and I truly, truly have a love for the library, the staff, and everything they do there. So Aurora, I think that's our French manager's name, yeah, I'm just special, thank you, shout out to her. I do want to clarify, I'm a taxpay resident of Spark for Battle, so we get that out of the way. And tonight's question, after listening to everybody speaking tonight, my personal question is, does the data reflect the true performance of Director Scott? Or does it reflect personal political agendas? The Library Board is not to pursue personal political agendas. It is a stewardess of the library's mission of patron service. Anyone who's looking at this evaluation accompanied by corresponding artifacts can see glaring discrepancies in the valuation numbers. Taking into account Lake Falls, Washoe County Employee Survey, Director Scott had, as I believe, an over eighty percent approval rate. Section two, subsection one reflects on workplace culture. One board member gave highly effective rating. Based upon the information that others have shared, and this quantitative rating of eighty percent, I would agree that's probably an accurate summation. Four gave minimally effective rating. So that's, I think, the questions that are going on today are, when we look at the quantitative and qualitative data for these evaluations, it just doesn't seem to match up, at least to your public, and I'm one of those people. This is one example of the board's perhaps bias against this respect aspect of Director Scott. Aside from all of this, I'm very confused about what has happened at the county commissioners' meeting yesterday. I believe Chair Silver wanted a closer look at details about the budget, and with all of the funding issues and the concerns and the programming that we need and want, I want my grandchildren to grow up in a library like my children have. And it's very important to consider all of that, and we need answers if we're gonna pull something like asking the county commissioners to further reflect the budget. We'd like answers.
I represent every single resident of Washoe County, absolutely all of them. I want to have a library director who doesn't bend to intimidation. Too late. Forced him out. Who stands for with workers and gets a great rating of performance from the people that worked under him. Again, also too late. Got rid of somebody that, you know, you liked to work for. So to have a board, most of whom are fairly new itself, questioning the efficacy of the director with little more than petty personal critiques seems odd. Even more odd when this board is also critical of the workers who have been victims of intimidation and, like, documented violence. That's why we don't have Drag Queen Soriano. I wish we listened to those who've worked under Jeff Scott and considered their voice more heavily. I think employees are a safe metric of a manager's performance, especially when that director had a longer tenure as director than the collective tenure of this board. Instead, this board has been hostile to the workers, have overturned bans on bigoted people who go to kids' events with signs that read "Drag is pedophilia" and "Gays Go to Hell." They fail to acknowledge that these workers have been physically assaulted by the same people who've also advocated against funding the library that report to pretend to care for. This board's support, lack of support is arguably more responsible for the vote failing that specifically one board member in particular, that I'm scared to say the name of for fear of hurting their feelings. Now you've also advocated only just yesterday to postpone the full funding of the library. I don't care how the library gets funded. I care that it is funded. And yet this board asks for weeks to postpone on funding because the board needs more time to better understand our library system. That calls into question this board's competency. How can you review someone's performance on a system you publicly admit you don't understand? You failed to support Washoe County, question one. In fact, more effort came from this board to be against it. You failed to get full funding from the county commissioners, and you want us to believe that Director Scott was the problem?
My name is Caitlin Nichols, and I'm a taxpay resident of Washoe County. I live close to, and I use the Spanish Springs Library, and I also use North Valley's library. I absolutely love the library, and it's tough. I even brought some of my library books I rented with me today. I'm a huge supporter of the library, and I believe we need to continue funding at all costs. I know fellow voters failed to approve a funding mechanism that would have allocated money collected by the county to the library system for thirty more years. The language in the ballot was confusing and at a reading level above a lot of adults in America. It's no secret we have a literacy crisis. I mean, I have kids. I know my voters, my fellow Washoe County voters, would have passed the measure if they truly understood what was being asked of them. The measure was not a new tax imposed in the north of Washoe County. The library system must continue, and we cannot allow it to drop down to only two days a week and staff wipe cuts. This would be disastrous for everyone. It also makes us look bad as a community and would likely lower home values, only having libraries open two days a week or less. Please approve the proposal that has been floated that would fund the library for at least another year or the end of the year. Please find a way to continue to fund the library every year at sufficient levels. Fifty-five grand a year is a joke. The budget should be in the millions to serve the entire community and support staff. Please find ways to increase funding and increase staffing levels. The libraries are a vital part of the community. The libraries are for everyone. Even if you don't like the library, they're for you. Also, please prioritize selecting a new library director who values diversity, pairs with all patrons, including LGBTQ+ patrons, the unhoused, et cetera, also who fights book bans, who's really a champion for the libraries. And please support this new library director. Whoever they are, we need strong, competent leadership in these tumultuous times. I know your job has gotten really tough in the last few years. Please continue to fight for the community. We absolutely need funding for the libraries and just more funding in general. Thank you for your time.
Red Meyer, for the record. Thank you for hearing my opinions about all this. I came here like everybody else, you know, was surprised. I'm glad he stepped aside. I appreciate what you're all doing. There's only one person here from when I first started coming to these meetings and paying attention to what's going on in the libraries. There's four new people since then, and I believe everybody has gotten a taste of the Jeff Scott culture. And there's a culture throughout the library system that he helped create. It may have been here before. I wasn't involved, as involved before. I don't know for sure. But it sure seems if it was here before, he was very much about it and wanted to keep it intact and keep a close control over it. And he did a good job of that, but he did not listen to his constituents, us, the public, and we felt it was very unfair. And we felt it was very unfair. We weren't getting heard. You know, we were requesting things that we thought were reasonable, put books that are age appropriate, where they belong in the library. We still want that done. We're not, we're not going anywhere. You know, everybody wants to act like their hair's on fire here. It's kind of like when Trump got elected to me. It's like they're freaking out. It's like, no, this is great. This is a cleansing. We needed this and this is fantastic that this is happening. I appreciate you all. You're working for free. It's a hard job. It's thankless. I've seen what you guys have had to go through. And I've been frustrated sometimes and angry with individuals up there, but I still appreciate you and I'm rooting for you. And I think in that regard, probably everybody here is rooting for you guys to, you know, do the tough job, get somebody here that's going to hear all of us. And also, you know, these folks that work in this system here, they need to realize it's not theirs. It is all of ours. They have acted like, and we have felt like, some of us here, like they, like it's theirs. And, and you know, they're, they're sort of sharing in it. It's like, it doesn't feel right. And we would appreciate a more open, inviting environment. My, my wife Googled the library system just as we were sitting here. My picture still comes up on that sheet for, which was total bogus and we went through all this. I won't do it again. I was found innocent, but why is my picture still there? Give it off. Although it is a good picture, but you know, I'd appreciate it being brought. And thank you for your time.
Yes. I've redone my comments several times since I've been sitting there, listening to everybody. So I'm going to say something different. A couple of facts, right? I was, I was eighteen, I think, when that original bond passed. And it was super exciting because we were going to get libraries where we didn't have libraries before. And that was great because those libraries were built and those were huge, huge capital expenses. And so all of those libraries were built. And we had, you know, infrastructure costs a huge amount of money. We're seeing that now because we don't have infrastructure in like a lot of the county where they're building, right? So we don't have that. So all of that infrastructure was built, very excited, love the library, everything's great. And then over time, just in the last little bit, and you know, and, and I say I have old kids and I have young kids. And my old kids, we loved at the library. I never had an issue ever taking my older kids to the library. It felt safe, it felt good. When my younger kids started to get to the library and they're seventeen and nineteen, I started to feel like I had to, I had to hold them. I had to figure out where they were going. I had to figure out what they were saying. I'm listening to impassioned pleas. And I'm, and, and I wonder if the, if the answer is to understand that we all, we all are regular people with maybe differing views that really want maybe the same thing. And that's a functioning library. Now, what we're disagreeing on is what the functioning library looks like. And I would say the functioning library doesn't cause these polarizations that you're, I'm seeing this tonight, I'm listening to this. Every time I've been to the library meeting, you see these polarizations. And I'm wondering if a neutral, measured person who really understands everybody, but also doesn't placate to maybe one side or another, which I think that that maybe is what a lot of us have seen over the last ten years. I think that's what we're hoping for. And Silver, thank you. I'm going to say thank you for the measured fiduciary responsibility that you had at the commission meeting yesterday. Thank you. Because the whole budget, the entire county budget is in a crisis right now. We're twenty, well, and I think it's a little bit different now, they have a tentative budget, twenty-seven million dollars in the red every year for the next four years. Every county department is looking to have to cut. Every county, we have record revenue, we have record deficits. They're trying to figure out why. And what was disturbing was the county, I didn't see any cuts to the library. Leadership requires you to look at the whole picture and then respond to the whole picture. The whole picture was it's a divided population. The whole picture was every department has to cut. The whole picture is we've accomplished what we needed to accomplish with those bonds and we may not need all of that money anymore. And so, thank you. I appreciate the work you do. I don't envy the job that you're in and I hope we find a phenomenal, phenomenal director.
Hi, my name is Jude. I'm a lifetime resident of Washoe County and I love our libraries. I just want you to reflect on what you did today. You changed a man's life and you changed his family's life. And I don't know what he did to deserve that. He's been accused of a range of things ranging from silencing conservative voices to running a cult to being gay. And that's how I know that this opposition comes from hate because there's nothing wrong with being gay. And gay people and trans people and homeless people and people who use this library are being scapegoated for larger structural problems. And that's what you did to former Director Scott. Just because we are minorities and we can't stand up for ourselves? I know that a lot of people are scared and they're angry. And the economy is spanking terrible and there are budget cuts in every sector, including the library where I work in history. But scapegoating people doesn't lead to solutions. It leads to more conflict, it leads to war on a more extreme level. But I think you guys are the guardians of the money, as someone said earlier. You're also the guardians of knowledge. And knowledge should inspire empathy. But knowledge is also power. I hope that you use that power responsibly. And I hope that you recognize that you really changed someone's life today by doing what you did. He worked here for ten years, that's a long career.
Hi, Kate, for the record. I'm a student here in Reno. I'm pretty new here. I was a, I grew up in Clark County School District. Frankly, terrible place to grow up in and try to receive an education from. But I remember my first time at this library also feeling similar to one of our other community members. Feeling really inspired and welcome here. There's not much left to say. The decision's been made for us. I'd like to highlight what's already been said about the dysfunctionality of this board. How irresponsible it's been to go through this with some people here. A lot of people would like to say they feel underrepresented, you know, behind me. But I see them in front of me on this board, looking at me, nodding and smiling, acting like they care or that they listen. And I'd just like to point out that I think a lot of us don't feel like that's the case. And as supposed stewards of community information and appointed guardians of these beloved cultural hubs, if this is what you want, then so be it. But the people, as God willed it, will reassert their existence. And if maintaining this illusion of safety is what you want, then you can make that bed. But you are guardians of the money. And I'm glad that we can establish that that's what a lot of us here care about. And it's so obvious how uncomfortable we are talking about people that exist and how uncomfortable we are in our understanding of the world. And I'd just like us to all sit with that. And I don't want to use my last minute.
Hi, Penny Brock, for the record. I go to the county commission meetings. I appreciate Chair Silver, what she said yesterday. It was a budget meeting. And in that budget meeting, the budget, well, the budget for this fiscal year is one point two billion dollars. Out of the general fund, the library got twelve million dollars to pay salaries, everything. Okay, there's twenty-six different departments. They all have a budget given to them out of the general fund. Those budgets are not being cut at all for any of the departments. The library is not being cut. For this next fiscal year, I'm happy to tell everybody they're getting their twelve million dollars. The libraries will not close. The staff, unless they've overhired, should not be fired. So this is all good news. The library's just fine financially. So please stop saying there's a fiscal crisis. That's a lie. That is not true. Also, the, yesterday at the commission meeting, they had an audit report on the library for the handling of cash. It was buried in the consent items. But I brought it to the attention of the county commissioners. Jeff Scott signed off on it. They did not give the library board a copy of it. The commissioners were shocked at that. It shows the incompetence of Jeff Scott in handling cash that comes into the different libraries. That is very serious. So as I sat there, I wondered what else was he doing with the finances of the library in the budget? So I'm glad that the board is going to be looking at that. It's hard to get that information. But hopefully attorney, the attorney here can help you get that. Because we as citizens can't, even though we're supposed to under a public records request. There's a lack of transparency. Therefore, you cannot have accountability if there's no transparency. So the other thing is, at the meeting yesterday, it came out about the bond that just ended, the thirty-year bond. It ended, it's called a sunset in the NRS. It could not be renewed. You had to start over again, over again. So that line needs to be dispelled, that that could continue because it couldn't. It had to be a new tax. So I came up here, I wasn't going to speak, but I wanted to get certain things on the record to, to give those out that there are concerned that the budget's only going to be fifty thou, fifty-five thousand dollars. Where did that come from? That is an absolute lie. Thank you very much.
Is this working? Oh, okay. All right. Good evening. My name is Andrew Marins. I'm a library assistant two at the South Valley's branch. I'd like my comment to please be added to the record. My wife and I were in our hotel room in the French Quarter in New Orleans and about to fly back home from vacation when we found out that WC one didn't pass. I can still vividly remember the cold sweat on my forehead, my heart rate quickening and losing the feeling in my fingers, the telltale signs of an oncoming panic attack. Waiting in line at the airport to check my luggage, my hands felt like lead weights as I texted my supervisor, "Does this mean I'm going to be fired?" She told me to put it out of my mind as best as I can, that nothing was set in stone and there was no point in worrying about things I have no direct control over. It wasn't just the time change from flying across country that made that day one of the longest and most miserable days of my life. In the more than five months since that day, even when taking that advice to heart, I've never truly stopped worrying for my colleagues or our patrons. And then last week, our branch manager sent out a group text informing us that a proposal had been put out to fully fund the libraries for a year and avoid layoffs. Do you know what it's like to finally exhale after holding your breath for five months straight? Because even with that profound relief, I still wouldn't wish any part of that experience on anyone. But our work isn't done yet. I hope the Board of Trustees and library staff both use this opportunity we've been given to chart a new, better path forward. There's no better time than right now to channel what we're feeling into crafting sound, long-term plans for the library system. And how can we, as staff members, better show you what we need, especially as relating to Chair Silver's comments to the Board of County Commissioners yesterday? The library budget has been discussed at every single Board of Trustees meeting since at least December, if not further back. If any of you need something from us to help expedite the next steps, then please name it. We are at your service here. Help us help you. I know I would hate to see the board get bogged down in granular details when we are so close to getting over the finish line on this. And getting a new measure placed on the ballot next year to guarantee library funding for many years beyond this temporary solution should also be at the very top of both of our to-do lists. And on a final note, to the public commenter who expressed their desire for a brand-new North Valleys library, I would respectfully ask them if they voted no on WC one. If they did, and I have a strong suspicion this particular person did, then congratulations. You got exactly what you voted for. My colleagues and I look forward to working with each of you. Thank you for your time.
No, Julie, I'm after Andrew. Thank you. The mic seemed to work for Andrew, so I'm going to use it as well. I am Julie Ullman, I'm the branch manager at the South Valley's Library. And I do want to clear up a couple of things and ask a couple of questions. There is a fiscal crisis. Don't listen to somebody who says there's not. If you were at the BCC meeting yesterday, you heard Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Andriola both say they would not support the one point three million dollars from the general fund that was going to be given to the library as part of their proposal from the county manager's office. One point three million there. They just had three point three million out of the expansion fund would be able to be used this year and then it's gone. That is a fiscal crisis. That is over four million dollars. We operate with all of that money, not without the three point three or the one point three that the commissioners have clearly indicated they will not be supporting. Additionally, if you were to look at your responsibilities and the library's responsibilities in regards to Nevada Revised Statute 379.003, a strategic plan is supposed to be made for the libraries in Nevada every two years. Our strategic plan expires this year. Finding a way to get that done is your responsibility. We have no director. If you are planning to hold more meetings, which I certainly hope you do, meeting agenda prep was also handled by the director. I hope you have a plan for that as well. And of the one point something billion dollars in the county, the library gets two percent or less. That is not a lot to do everything that we do. So my question is, what is your plan? What is your solution for each of these problems that we now have in addition to the challenges that we've been dealing with for quite a while now? And thank you.
I didn't really think about. I am speaking. I got my three minutes to say anything I want. What would you say if you had three minutes here? And that's all you have? Because it represents all the feeling that you have about everything that's involved. And then you're made of this by certain people that disagree with your existence and don't want to be a part of a world that is truly united. How can I believe in the flag being posted straight up and not feel like I'm in distress? If, if, I can't park my car on the street. But when I came in here today for the first time, I've been in the North Valleys like this. When I came in here today for the very first time, there were so many possibilities. And, you know, I can't see just not having to be here with as much of everyone's culture and everything that involves all of us. When you omit somebody, you make them a second-class citizen. I don't know who to miss what. That's not for me to explain this. Ask yourselves that. And ask the people who look at you and you need to do a good day or try to look at it from a new perspective, dude, we've all grown up with something that is completely different than someone. Every one of us is our own unique beautiful being. Let's put that together, and then I'll have one minute of silence if needed, see?
Talk about funding or tell you guys how to strategize. I'm actually here to talk about my experience and everybody's people present. In here, um, I know every corner of this library, it's my safe place. It's where I go when I'm scared and alone. When I want to be important, when I want to read up on things, when I want to be more informed, when I need to do some research, I mean, like I said, I'm not going to tell you guys how to spend or what to spend or what to do or how to treat your employees, but they are important people like me who come here and have lovely experiences with the security guards, with the people checking up, with people to walk around and make sure that you know where to find stuff or feel welcome and happy. And, you know, I still have two minutes, but I don't have much to say, I just wanted you guys to know that this place is important and a vacation place, if you guys' employees happy, happy as well. Because they make life easier for someone.
Valerie?
Hello?
Valerie, are you on mute?
Yes, can you hear?
Yes.
Hi, I, I I wanted to thank you all for your service. You're all smart with me, and I have confidence in your abilities and right fish. I would like to remind everybody in the audience that Jeff's did not get fired, he resigned. Um, there was a previous user who was a lawyer who said she was very nice to the library, and for that, I don't want to be for her. I happen to be one of the people who's down in the library, and who also has a CIA file with pictures in Director Scott's office. If you don't believe me, speak to Drew Rebar or do a FOIA request of your own, it will shock you. Uh, some of the things that have been said about me will shock you. Uh, some of the things that have been said about my business will shock you, they're defamatory. Um, I do expect, um, actually, let me back up, there's one conservative on this library board. Uh, and now people in the audience want to get rid of the entire board. It's quite shocking to me tonight to watch Democrats want to eat their own. It's stunning to me, actually. No one has questioned the bias of the one positive evaluator. That's also stunning to me. I expect great things going forward from this board, and I'm certain that you can get there, and I'm praying that you can find somebody who will truly be center of center in this community and will look at the needs and desires of the entire community. Uh, I don't expect everything that I want in the library, I don't expect that I'll get that. But I think we can find somebody that will meet the needs of the entire community without inserting politics, politics into everything, which I think Director Scott did do, and he wasn't fair to the people who didn't believe just as he believed. And he built a culture around that in the library. If you don't believe me, you need to look at all 3,600 of the emails that I FOIA'd if you think that I'm lying to you. Uh, it's all there, it's in writing, you can, you can judge for yourself. Uh, you, you too can see it, it's, it's not my imagination. Uh, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom at this time?
That's the only one.
When we have concluded public comments, I want to thank all those who spoke. Thank those who departed after they spoke. We will now move to item number four, which is non-action item, board comment. Do I have comments from my fellow board members regarding announcements, strategic plan of activities, updates to issues proposed for future agendas and on work counts? Any comments from my panel?
Trust, trustee Moser, hello, can you hear? Trustee Moser for the record. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for everyone for participating in this, you know, practice of government and, um, using our voices collectively to, I know everyone cares, and so that's apparent. I think too, you know, I can only speak for myself, and my experience is that this library is special to me as well, and I know to many people on this board. And there, there has been over the last three years of my tenure as a volunteer trustee to engage in a professional relationship that, um, I wanted to have with Director Scott. Uh, and unfortunately, I was consistently met with obfuscation in terms of professional oversight of things that are important for us to understand. Uh, concerning the budget, concerning policies, uh, a myriad of things, and if anyone is interested, I can publish the emails between Director Scott and I, in which this is very, very obvious, in which this obfuscation has occurred. Our evaluations submitted independently, for the most part, say the same thing. And we've all separately been appointed at different times with different experiences, but yet somehow come to a similar conclusion despite not being able to talk to each other as a group in any manner, this is all independent experiences with the director. And unfortunately, this is not what any of us wanted to go into, is to discipline the director. That's none of, we want to support and engage in positive, you know, encouraging, fun activities. I personally came into this position with a wide variety of ideas that were struck down by the director um, on numerous occasions, such as, I wanted on my very first meeting to encourage a tool library. Um, I've encouraged to do a run for reading. I've encouraged to do a publication for buses, which after much pushing, was able to get published with RTC, so there have been some wins, but overall, it's been a really hard relationship to be able to do things as a board that you keep asking us to do. And just for the record, I have been to every single library now for three years, once a month, every different library. So the fact that I'm not going to libraries is false, I'm a fifth generation Nevada and I grew up here. I grew up in the libraries, I'm a first-generation college graduate. I, I went to the Peace Corps for two years, in which I did not have running water, electricity, transportation. I know how difficult it is to live. Um, these are not things that elude me, they are, these are not things that elude most of the board. I think considering too, the type of people that have volunteered for this position and our experiences and our education, there needs to be some level of trust that we have the best interest of providing a healthy library system for this community. And that includes for me personally, an understanding of thoroughness of the budget, which we still have not been able to have. Um, so I'm hopeful that in the next few months, we will be able to have emergency meetings where we discuss the budget in depth to get a thorough understanding. Um, the thing about the audit, that was not something that Director Scott gave to us. I had to call the Audit Commission and ask for if there had been any audits, and they said yes, actually, one was just published right before the meeting I went to. So there's been blatant obfuscation, um, and the lack of ability to even evaluate has been apparent, not only from the director, but from the county in general, and I, I saw yesterday at the BCC meeting, not just our board, but the county commission in general have the same issue with not being given a budget in a timely manner, where they are aware of the intricacies of the budget. So this to me is just unacceptable. I know these women are logical, pragmatic, compassionate women that have spent the majority of their lives trying to do good for not only them, their community, but, um, you know, it's agencies and institutions that they work for. And so I, I usually never talk this much, but I hope that, you know, I hear a lot of fear, and that is, I think, valid, I think, you know, I fear too, in, in the times that we are in right now, but if there's one thing that at least I know I can trust, is that this board has the right intentions, and at least one aspect of this community, I feel, I can feel safe in that we are trying to do our best, so. Um, thank you though for attending and for putting yourselves out there. And, um, I hope you continue to attend in the next few months as we go through this transition.
Thank you, trustee Moser. Any other board comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record, trustee Jax. I just want to thank everyone tonight for their public comments. Uh, this is what it's all about. So we are here, um, as a strong supportive board, and I respect and appreciate all my board members and their hard work. And I want to thank you all, I have no further comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any one else? I'm sorry? Trustee Roger? Oh, hurry, I'm sorry, please, if you'd like to speak.
Trustee Rodriguez for the record. Um, well, I did share some frustration like everyone else about, um, the information we were getting on the budget in a timely manner so that we could properly evaluate January, February, and March, which is the only timeframe that we were supposed to be evaluating, Director Scott. Um, as was presented earlier today, the Spanish Springs presentation, and all the presentations that the library directors have been doing um, since the beginning of the year. One thing did concern me about my colleagues, because we did receive a letter back in February from the Director of HR about our evaluations. And one word that stood out in her email to us was that it must be based on legitimate reasons. And while I understand some of the scores might be low relating to the budget, so many other parts of that evaluation do not reflect Director Scott's work. He has been involved with stakeholders, with the community, working on getting grants, working with his employees, and to say that his, the evaluation that was requested of his employees, and from my visits to the library, and I'm glad to hear that trustee Moser has been visiting the library, the employees are very happy with his work, he is working well with them. And when something is, you go into a library and it's bright, it's welcoming, has programs, and the employees are happy, that speaks a lot for their employer or the person that they report to, to their director, to their boss. I do have concerns about whether the evaluations of some of the areas were legitimate on this. Um, our roles and responsibilities have been outlined to us, and that as a trustee, that we are defenders of intellectual freedom and individuals' right to information. And that if anything should be in a library, a particular book or collection, our unequivocal response should be in defense of intellectual freedom, and that the material that we have in our libraries should be available to all segments of our community. This isn't something that comes from him, this is something that comes from, um, what our responsibility as trustees is. So I am really sad to hear this information, that he decided to leave us without us giving him an opportunity to maybe work on the areas that he, that we feel that he was lacking. We only gave him a three-month evaluation. He should have been granted an opportunity to work on the areas that maybe he wasn't as strong as maybe we'd like to see, although I felt in general he was doing well, um, despite the issues with the budget. And unfortunately, he decided to make the decision that he did. Um, we do have work ahead of us in trying to find a replacement, although I do think that based on my visits to the library, my views of how the staff feel about him, that, um, he's going to be hard to replace. And I don't know if it's a possibility, somebody made a comment about it, but can his resignation be rejected by the board, DA Kaplan?
Herb Kaplan for the record. Um, no?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, I just want to go on record of saying that if I were able to, I would reject his, his, um, his resignation.
Vice Chair Ruff for the record, I'd like to thank the public for coming out tonight and making your comments, I think that's important to voice um, your opinions in our community, I also wanted to make a comment too, for anyone who emailed comments under board comments, those were forwarded by Ciara. And, um, while I was not able to email directly back to them because it was a forwarded email, I wanted you to know that I had read all of them. And I tried to at least respond to those that came to me directly through my board um, email, uh, that I received them and that I read them, and I do, I read all of them, so, um, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that as well. As the only librarian on the board, I want to assure the community that, um, I am very confident that this board can move forward and that we can find an appropriate director for our very varied community. Um, I also know that we have phenomenal librarians in all of the branches, and we will be leaning in on their leadership in their branches, and we will be available to them, um, for questions and things as well. And that we are all, despite the criticism, we are, I am here, and I know we are here because we love the library, we're library users. And we will work as hard as we can getting the details of the budget, not the line item, but what makes up that line item, and how did that line item, how was that derived? And those are the things that we need to do to make sure we can find as much money as possible to keep the libraries open all of the hours and to keep the staff the way that we are used to having it here in our community. Thank you.
I'll make one last comment, I appreciate any constructive feedback that was, um, provided to us this evening. I don't think any of us are overly sensitive, but I would like to correct a few comments that were made. I learned very late this afternoon that Mr. Scott had voluntarily tendered his resignation to the Human Resources Department. The board was caught unaware of that resignation. The Board was caught unaware of that resignation. So when we've been asked, what are we thinking? What are we planning? What are we going to do? Can't say for sure, since we were just notified late this afternoon. Secondly, I feel very strongly, and while I have found it very difficult as Chair or a trustee to speak with my colleagues, because we're all very observant of open meeting law, we cannot even attend a social event without concern about open meeting law, that we do not conspire or work behind the scenes to do anything. You see us in action here. We can't respond to your public comments? We can only hear one another's thinking as it is said at the time? So lest you think that there was some conspiracy or some way that we all encouraged Mr. Scott to depart, that is so far from the truth. In fact, no one here can say what would have occurred tonight if Mr. Scott were here. There is no one who can say he would not have been given corrective feedback or the opportunity to improve in areas that we may have felt he was deficient. So please do not judge us when it was after 3:30 this afternoon that I was notified by Mr. Kaplan that Mr. Scott had voluntarily tendered his resignation. It's been stated tonight, we have a lot of work to do. And I am prepared and can only turn to my colleagues and ask that we have more meetings than once a month. We have a great deal of work to do, not only to avoid layoffs, not only to continue to show appreciation for every librarian whom hopefully we've heard from, and every time we acknowledge the great report and great activities of each library. All of us are book lovers, are library lovers, or we would never have submitted our names to be selected by the Commissioners. So there is no way we don't want to see our live, our, let me put it differently. We want to see our library system thrive. We don't want hours reduced, libraries closed, libraries not built in the future, people treated poorly, people feeling afraid or tender about coming to a library. We all love our libraries. And while I can't speak for my colleagues, I'm fairly certain all of us have used the library, frequent the libraries. We were criticized tonight for not visiting the libraries. You have no idea what my scale is or anybody else on this board. And when I was offered this opportunity, I was not told I must visit every single library. I live about, I work um, 60 hours plus a week, 60 feet from one of the libraries and frequent it regularly. And I am thrilled to see that library every time I walk in there. So the criticism, or I'll say constructive feedback we received this, this evening, I'm sure was given with great intentionality. We've heard you. We appreciate hearing from you. That's what uh, the public comment is for. And so I thank all of you for being candid with us. But I can assure you, you are in good hands with me and my colleagues. And understand that we are not able to collect with one another, speak with one another on, on a regular basis, or apparently even be at a social function without possibly violating open meeting law. So the work you see us doing is the work you see at this board meeting. With no other comments, let me move on and ask for approval of the meeting minutes from March 19th for possible action. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 19th?
Trustee Rodriguez for the record, so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Vice Chair Ruff.
Do I have, thank you, Chair Ruff, do I, Vice Chair Ruff, do I have approval of the meetings on a yea vote? All those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Yea. Thank you. Yea, yea, sorry. Um, going to item number six, old business. We have none listed. New business, item number B was canceled due to Mr. Scott's voluntary resignation. But we did have item A, recognizing National Volunteer Month honoring library volunteers. And I think that's incredibly important. I want to ensure that all volunteers know how very much they are appreciated by this board for their time and their dedication to the gem we call our library system. Jane or Brad, do you have comments to make? Jane, I'm sorry, Jamie?
My way. Thank you very much. Is this, is this working? Are we not doing the mine?
Just, just speak up. Thank you.
Okay.
Steve, hello. All right, for the record, it's Jamie Hemingway. I'm the Public Information and Development Officer. I oversee volunteer program for Washoe County Library. Um, I am here with Brad Minow. He's going to assist me. We are going to recognize our amazing volunteers. So excited to do that. Um, Brad, I will ask if you will provide this to, you'll pass these around to trustees and give one to Sierra for the record. And this one for you. We're going to divide this up. So I want to really, I love program, one of Mr. Scott's strengths is his belief in employees run amazing programs, do amazing work. And that has been my pleasure to do, to get this, this program back off the ground. Um, he did put an end to temporary parts of the program during COVID, we're obviously. Our, for the record, to get that program back on, off the ground. That officially ends 2023. So what you'll see here, these numbers reflect since 2023. I'll say January 1st, 2021. Um, but what this will reflect is a total of first and, and then here, so hours reflected from current volunteers who are in the branches right now, and then over time, some of our award-winning volunteers. It may not be current volunteers, but have earned the, uh, these President's Volunteer Service Award. So first off, let me start by saying that volunteer opportunities, they include providing clerical support, peer assistance, public air maintenance, maintenance, and program and outreach for the week. You might see a Washoe County Library volunteer assisting the public during a computer class. They may prepare materials for a draft for a bunch of books, maintain book stacks, or clean shelves, tables, chairs, and computers. Our volunteers have also been known to march with us in our career. So very experienced that they get participated in, uh, in serving the library. They donate their time plus, and they are forever tuned to get to pull that. So um, I, our goal here is to make this higher list and honor those volunteers from each of the main branches. So we're going to go back and forth. I will get started here. So we'll say since 2023, the downtown Reno Library has had 43 volunteers, gave 443.95 hours. Current volunteers, Jayden Anderson, four hours, and Kathy, this volunteer in 2025, Sandy Patterson, 33 hours, Glenn Benton, 22 hours. Maria Maples, new in 2025, Boishe Matthews, 26 hours, Paul White, eight hours, and Scott Brass, 15 hours.
At the England Village Library, we had 20 volunteers give 380 hours. That includes Sherry Butler with 53 hours, Patricia Owens with 80 hours, Anne Rastus with eight hours, and Jackie Givano, 305 hours, and a bronze award.
At the Northbound Library, 12 volunteers gave 426 hours since 2023. That includes Jayden Anderson with 43 hours, Kathy Everhart with 27 hours, Carly Jennings with 41 hours, Caitlin Peetall, 37 hours, and Cynthia Ramirez with 25 hours.
Northwest Reno Library, we've got 72 volunteers with 2,151.55 hours. And that includes Eliza Alley with six hours, Allison Carter with 346 hours in silver award, Jeff Carter with 38 hours, Dolly Chauhan with 120 hours in a bronze award, Elizabeth Koshard with, who was new in 2025, Alex Dobby, 62 hours, Ana de Gómez Perez with 377 hours, and a gold 377 hour. Angelica Dezon with two hours, and Angela Dezon with two hours. Karen Gage with 80 hours, Alexandra Hook with 58 hours, Valerie LaBarre with 79 hours, Marisa Martinez with 34 hours, Rebecca Norton with 73 hours, Adeline Sossier with 143 hours, a bronze award, and Imesinta with one hour.
At the Syracuse Library, 47 volunteers gave 1,299.77 hours. Mark Armstrong, 10 hours, Mary Armstrong, new in 2025, Kim Bradshaw, two hours, Maren Chang, 155.06 hours, receiving a bronze award. Sue Constance, 76.75 hours. Susan Henneberg, 13.96 hours. Robin Howell, 20 hours. Rebecca Minas, 522.92 hours, and a gold award. We've got Kathy Moore at 100 hours, receiving a bronze award. Joel Soto, four hours. Joaquin Williamson.
South Valleys Library, we've had 153 volunteers give 2,948.78 hours. That includes Rhonda Ahmad with 131.4 hours in a bronze award. Chris Batros with 50 hours, Glenn Bitton with 26 hours. Pat Casa Grande with 200.57 hours in a bronze award. Katie Cole with 64.4 hours. Liz Conti with 72.86 hours. Jackie Daly with 73.12 hours. Miles Dubois with 57.29 hours. Karen Gentry with 114 hours in a bronze award. Kelly Coach with 103.14 hours. Carol Monroe with 163 hours, and both those two got bronze awards as well. Yusha Rothie with 35 hours. Jess Solini with 35 hours. Julie Sattit, 177 hours in a bronze award. Addison, 117, 15 hours, bronze award. Linda Tuppen, 307 hours in silver award. Shelley Van Vonger, 105.3 hours in a bronze award. Peggy Whitton, 98 hours. John Wilson, 61.
And at the Spanish Springs Library, 69 volunteers gave 234.65 hours. That includes Brigitte Africa, 215.84 hours in a silver award. Donna Bachelor, 67 hours. Raina Bell, 42.68 hours. Maria Christensen, 15 hours. Sophia Draven, 15 hours. Sean Francis, 12 hours. Mariah Bronk, 160.04 hours in a bronze award. Sue Borg, 113 hours in bronze award. And Ananya Ummashanfar, 15 hours.
And at the Sparks Library, 19 volunteers gave 341 hours. That includes Anna Bates at 19 hours, Charlene Belloria with 36 hours, Benny Hatcher, who's new in 2025, Janice Howard, 52 hours, Keith Jewett, 25 hours, Lance Larson, 39 hours, Yvonne Martinez, 26 hours, Sabrina Matthews, 40 hours, and then Paulie Smallwood, 10 hours. Thank you to all of them.
That's terrific. Thank you.
That was signed by Chair Hill in honor of National Volunteer Week, which officially starts on the 1st of April. Whereas we honor the individuals who volunteer throughout the year, recognizing that their active kindness not only changed lives, but also served as a vital part of civic engagement. And whereas we recognize the power of people to build more vibrant communities through volunteering with hints of their time, energy, expertise, and conviction. And whereas volunteers are sent in tackling the society's greatest challenges and helping build stronger, more connected communities through their everyday actions. And whereas volunteers come together to create lasting changes in the communities where they live and work, serving as role models and inspire others through their positive impact and by encouraging everyone to shine their own light. And whereas Washoe County residents who choose to help their neighbors by volunteering with Washoe County Library System support our most vulnerable populations. And whereas National Volunteer Week provides an opportunity to celebrate impact people have when they use their civic power to support causes they care about. And now therefore, Washoe County Commissioner Alexis Hill does nearby recognize that we give April 20th, 2025, as National Volunteer Week. I do have a photo that I received from Robin at the Northwest Reno Library, who's one of our volunteer coordinators. I'd like to pass this around, this is one of their volunteers at the Northwest Reno Library, probably standing with the recognition. Uh, we did give each of our volunteer coordinators a copy of this, so they all have this. The goal is they are each going to celebrate the volunteers at their home branches to make it more personal experience. We also have pins that we ordered for them to do that. Uh, pins that um, have a green, uh, green jug in the middle, and they say, I am a Washoe County Library System volunteer. So each of the volunteers, the current volunteers on this list will be receiving those pins. I also want to salute my volunteer coordinators. There's a coordinator and a backup coordinator at each of the eight main branches. They were very hard to run this program. I cannot give all the credit. I helped them solve problems and figure out how to do it, but they can harbor every day and I see you for that.
Thank you.
Jamie and Brad, thank you so much for this presentation, for honoring volunteers, for totaling all those hours and for presenting them with certificates and pins. That's a great way to show recognition. So thank you again. Really appreciate it.
Sorry, one second. If you, um, Trustee Moser for the record. I was just wondering, so it says that there's, you know, 43 for downtown, but then only a few represented here, and they are the award-winning volunteers. But I'm just wondering, how did that um, get decided?
So we are, our plan is going forward, mind you, we've only had this really in, in place again, restarted since 2023. So we're getting everything off the ground, including recognizing volunteers. Part of that process will be to recognize them on an annual basis. So right here, what you're seeing are volunteers that, we've sort of did a combination here. Um, we did a combination of volunteers that are currently volunteering in the branches, logging their hours as of like, with current month. Um, and then we also included, um, we also included volunteers that have, um, that have reached those President's Volunteer Award milestones. So we're honoring those because we did in the past, but we're including them in this report. So the report going forward will look differently. What you'll see is more current, we'll just have the current volunteers on there. Um, but we did want to recognize the folks that we didn't get to recognize in the previous years. So it's a little bit of a mix-up of different things, but I do have a key on the bottom that denotes uh, people's status as far as if they're current, if they've received the award. So um, that will be our plan going forward to make sure we honor all of the current volunteers.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions, Jamie or Brad? If not, thank you again so much, and thanks to all your volunteers. I wish we could thank each of them personally, but please convey our real congratulations to them. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment with a three-minute time limit per person. If there is anyone wishing to step forward in public comment, if there's a sign-in sheet, I will call up the names. Thank you. All right, Ayla Arbataman, Arbataman, I'm sorry for butchering that name. Ayla, Ayla.
I was speaking to a friend and ally about the concept of a negative peace. Does the board know what this term means? It means capitulating to fascists. It means sacrificing everything, principles, public institutions. They're willing to fight for what is right in exchange for an illusory peace and stability. We're not there yet, but that is definitely where we're headed, because that's what happens when you push against our strength. Their demand will never cease nor slow down. They score a win by their destructive, destructive tactics. They play nice for a meeting or two, until it is time to be banned to a circle. Massively violent and intimidation led to the loss of revenues for the information that Trustee had from the concert with the experience of advocating against WC1 has now put the library into a very real funding crisis. That's what happened. Relentless attacks on the Director and Board incompetence has now cost us leadership in an unprecedented and difficult moment. I hope everyone in this room knows that the Chair of the Board of Trustees went before the BCC yesterday and did explicitly advocate against fully funding the library. Why? More time with the budget, which we've heard before, has been presented for LBO's discussion in October, December, January, February, and March. There might be a misunderstanding here about the difference between, uh, a misunderstanding of the difference between funding and a budget. Right? If there is no funding, there is no budget. The LBO's only real duty is to keep the library funded. You have to think about the consequences of your actions. If you go before the BCC and advocate against fully funding the library, you're playing a dangerous game, as we've seen here. It is a big risk to take to do that.
I don't appreciate a personal attack based on falsehoods, but continue.
The extremists are not done. They will not stop until they have completely usurped power over the public institutions, which is what you are allowing them to do here, the whole book, life for life. The difference now is that the heat is off the direction. The difference now is that the heat is off the direction. Now it's all, are you prepared to be sitting up there in six months when the library is closing branches and laying off staff and still the rest? No other county boards come close to the level to this one, to in terms of haplessness and dysfunction. Do the right thing and take accountability for putting us all in this mess. Defensiveness up there is not a good look. Finally, I hope you are shocked as we are to hear the same people who have been sabotaging LBO meetings for years, right? Completely deny their on-record, well-documented behavior of destruction, intimidation, and violence. I hope their rejoicing and groveling today disturbs you. You have done exactly what they wanted. And I hope you are appalled to hear someone referring to what happened today as a quote cleansing, right? Everybody heard that? That's some scary shit, and we are in the middle of it.
Gail Townsend?
Gail Townsend for the record. I didn't have a chance to bring my paragraph, so I was messy. A hostility, especially Scott, commenting on evening's evaluation. Evaluation exists whether it is described during talk. An evaluation that lives in an eerie reality that has no basis in actual fact. Directors thought their natural job, the wide reasons that I did, staff who takes themselves in a hard regard, requires directors thought our community can live this in excellent director. I have no qualms in the ability of the trustees to choose a new director. I do not foresee a happy future for Washoe County Life. We'll know on June 1st whether the library is funded. So we'll know whether my feeling is correct or your feeling is correct. We'll know that on June 1st. October, we'll find out exactly what is going to fall behind. And when you pick a new director, we'll see the kind of person you chose. Are you choosing a competent professional librarian or are you hazing to the opposition and choosing someone that will give them everything they want? And that presupposes we're going to have a library. Because there have already been essays, op-eds, and newspapers saying, we don't need a library. So I really wonder what slides are on. I am not comfortable, you know, you've heard criticisms, you've heard your comments, not wanting to ignore that you deserve criticism. So those are the comments I have, and there's a lot going for them.
Followed by Kate Salim?
I apologize for my miscommunication. Kate Salim for the record. I know when I walked in tonight and heard the news, I was in shock. And I'm sure a lot of the employees were in shock as well. I've been a county employee for 25 years. I've been through this budget crisis before in 2008, and I know that fear that so many of the employees of this library can't just be wiped away with, oh, you're going to be funded, you're fine. That's not what it's like. We're seeing our retirement accounts take. We're seeing so many things. And every month I come here, and I've been coming here every month with the exception of one month, since December 2023. And I hear staff do these fabulous presentations. I pay attention to them. I wish the board would pay attention to them, not run around the room, be on the phone. And I have learned so much about these amazing individuals that work for this library. I've already, I already appreciated you, but my esteem has grown beyond measure. You work with the public every day. With a sampling very often, and just riffers, what it's like to work with the public. It's not always easy. And you rise to the occasion. To hear about all these volunteers, that means they want to work with you. And that says so much. All of you are absolutely amazing people. And I truly hope this board will get someone that these people deserve, that will appreciate these people and these individuals. Because the work they do in our community is more than just check out a book. It's huge. It falls into every aspect, many, many aspects of our lives. And so I am grateful for all of these individuals, and I thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public commenters that have registered, let me ask if anyone, I'm sorry.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Take your name for the I want to thank trustee Rodriguez for your integrity in the evaluation process and for being willing to voice support for that. For Scott, to light up what my brain itself has said and what you yourself saw in the brains. I also commend Chair Silver for his ability more than monthly meetings. That is a phenomenal idea that I hope trustees will act upon. And I go on the floor to intending those that are open to the public, which I imagine most of them will ask. In months ahead, I hope you will work closely with librarians, including our talented and knowledgeable community director. I urge you to rely on the experiences of those library staff who have helped keep the system running alongside our former director. They will be the ones best equipped to give a real understanding of how the library operates behind the scenes. They are also the ones who best understand what the system needs. I hope you'll also work with librarians in choosing a new director. They're the ones whose thoughts on the director truly matter. At the very least, please see someone who has proper library qualification. Also, a reenactment invasion. When peace becomes obnoxious, however, regardless of who gives, I hope you'll find the meaning. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Any other public comments, I assume? All right. Well, that concludes item number eight, public comment. Are there any staff announcements, item number nine? Hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting.